Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our May 22 Town Council meeting. Our municipal clerk, we have Fatima here today. Our municipal clerk is celebrating her daughter's graduation from college and Fatima's filling in.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2, 2017. Councilwoman Casalino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokovie?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. Thank you. So my colleagues and I just came from Llewellyn Park, the home of Thomas Edison for christening of the fire department's Engine 2. They since Llewellyn Park and that area and the new redevelopment area on Main Street is part of Engine 2's zone, they thought it was appropriate to have the ceremony at the home of Thomas Edison at the National Historic Park. And on the side of the new fire truck, energy efficient fire truck, there is a picture of Thomas Edison. So it was a lovely ceremony. We wish them Godspeed in all that they do. And West Orange being the most decorated community for veterans in the state, we invite everyone to attend the Memorial Day Ceremony here on the steps of Town Hall at 10 o'clock on Monday, May 28. Though it is the end of May, it is supposed to be spring. We hope the weather does cooperate with us by then. First on our agenda is our budget presentation. We have our Chief Financial Officer, John Gross.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight and give you a short presentation on the 2018 West Orange Municipal Budget. I've got some slides for you and I'll try to keep the discussion as light as possible and less technical, but in terms of the day-to-days of being a Chief Financial Officer, I was asked by the Council President to speak English tonight in finance. 2018 Municipal Budget, as introduced and anticipated adoption, will be a total of $83,225,484, which is broken up into total personnel costs of $52 million, total fixed costs of approximately $20 million, grants and $1.7 million, and all other expenses at $9.5 million. That represents an increase in $3,518,000. Breaking that down, total personnel costs up $1.2 million, total fixed costs up $800,000, approximately, grants up $1.35 million, and all other expenses up $174,879. Now what that means in terms of percentages is total personnel costs are up 2%, total fixed costs are up 4%, our grants are up 345%, and all other expenses are up 2%. So we had a really good year in grants this year, and that's one of the reasons that you see the overall budget is up about 4.4%. That seems high, but when you take into consideration that have such a large increase in grants, which comes with, on the other side of the expense, the money to pay for them, it really skews that number. So the 4.4 really is closer to, in the area, little higher, little north of 2. Our revenues in the state of New Jersey, we're required to have a balanced budget, so our revenues are 83,225,484, the same number. And no big surprise, the largest number there, 67% of our revenues come from taxes. Then from surplus, we have about $3.2 million from surplus. Other local revenues, which are other charges that we pay, $14 million. State aid, which has stayed, remained basically the same for the last eight years, is at $4.7 million. Delinquent taxes this year, $3.2 million. And again, the grant figure is the 1.7, bringing us to the 83.225,484. So whatever wants to do is where your taxes go. And this is a familiar chart if you've watched any budget presentation. You see that your total tax dollars is much more than what we're, the levy from the municipality is $225 million this year, of which, you know, 14% comes from the county, 61% is from the Board of Education, and the balance, approximately 25%, is the township's share of the total tax bill. All of our revenue sources, our surplus, we're up 8% this year, our local revenues are up 1%, state aid is equal, same, delinquent taxes are up 25%, again, 350 on the grants, and our taxes, anticipated for this budget, would be an increase in 2% amount to be raised by taxation. So again, if we look at our total taxes for the municipal levy, it's $56,090,488. And as I mentioned, that's a 2% increase in taxes. Now, are, listen, I don't want to go too fast here. Where we spend our money, and the vast majority of where we spend all of our money, is in staffing. And you look in 2018, we have 306 full-time employees. That's down from a high of 375 in 2006, and you can see that we have trimmed our staffing down over the past 10 years significantly, saving money for the taxpayer, which if that hadn't, if that hadn't occurred, we'd be having a much different discussion here today. What drives our budget? We have contractual obligations, we have medical benefits payments to active employees, retirement, medical benefit payments to our retirees. We have things like clothing allowance, and of course, annual paid time off, vacation sick, holidays, personal days, comp time, and retired accrued time benefits. And that's, that's time that isn't taken by a time an employee retires. Just to give you a sense of that, our uncompensated liability is around $16 million. What that means is if we had to pay out everybody that we owe time to today, we would have to pay out $16 million. So fortunately, we don't have to do that. It's one of those things that happens over a period of 25 years. So we do historically recently, we've been spending between $800,000 and $1.2 million a year in uncompensated balance liabilities when people retire. That works out to about $52,000 per employee on act. And the good news is, we've been working and we're working towards and putting in place processes to minimize this. We've negotiated agreements with our unions, we're new, and many of our new employees will not receive such benefits. So moving forward, these, this number is going to go down, and we'll get the benefit of that in the few, in future years. Now what has happened over a period of, in this case, 16 years, is if you look at 2002, you see that healthcare, we used to pay 34, I'm sorry, 11% for healthcare, 2% for pension and retirement, 1% for accrued time, salary and wage was 52%, and 34% was all other costs. The cost of benefits has shifted so dramatically that healthcare now, instead of being 11% in 2002, is now 18%. And retirement is 9%. Accrued time's still right around 1%, right around 1%. But if you look at that, the salary and wage actually only constitutes 42% of what we pay, you know, on our budget, as opposed to 52%. And all their expenses now are 30. So as the cost of benefits have really skyrocketed over time, we find that that took a much larger share of the dollars that we were spending. So that's one of the reasons, from a negotiations point of view, we really concentrate very hard on trying to limit future benefits. And as I mentioned before, we have been successful with some of our unions to eliminate, for instance, health benefits at retirement. So, which is, which is one of the largest driving factors in this. So this is, give you, at least give you an idea of some of the hotspots or the pressure points that we have in our budget and that we've been dealing with and continue to deal with. If you want to look, just to look at what employee medical costs have, the, this dark green line here, this is, this is the cost of employee benefits for health benefits, employee health benefits, from 2008 through 2018. And you can see that it dropped here around 2011, 2012. That's when we started going into the, two things happened there. One, we had a reduction in employees, and also then we went into the, into become self-insured shortly thereafter. And you can see that it's going up at a different rate than the retired employees. Our retired employees, this is light green here, you see that is really climbing and continues to climb. Now, one of the reasons that it does is that up until recently, we have not been able to collect contributions from retired employees. Moving forward, there's an opportunity for that, this point forward. And this bottom line down here is actually the employee's contribution towards healthcare. So if you add these three lines up, this is our actual total cost of healthcare. And you can see that it is like any other, if you've looked at these at all, we're no different than anybody else. These numbers are climbing and they will continue to climb. Pension costs, you see that they peaked in 2010 and then tailed off a little bit there and then now they're inching back. That's no surprise because we were pretty sure that, that, we weren't, we weren't really sure why they went down in the first place at that point in time. If you looked at all the numbers, we weren't sure that the rates were the right rates. Having said that, we appreciate that because we didn't have to, we didn't have to come up with the money. But as everyone, I think, knows, or if you don't, you can look into it, there's, the pension programs are struggling right now because of lack of contributions, not by the municipality, but by the state. So that's, that's, that's an issue that's going to be hot and continue to be hot.
John, what was, what was this like in 2011?
2011, there's no, we don't really have a good reason for that, but they, when I say we don't have a reason for it, we don't, we don't calculate the rates, the rates are given to us by the state, so they don't really come with a full explanation. We, we think it would, it would have gone higher, except for the fact that we ended up with reducing employees, we mitigated some of this. And that's why we, we got this drop here. And, but it's, but as you see, it's trending back and it's going to get back to, not necessarily where it was, but near there in the future. On top of personnel costs, we have other things, basically these are cost of service. I mean, we have day-to-day maintenance and services, you know, we have 14,000 households with 47,000 residents, 100 miles of roadways. So there's a lot of things that we have to do. We have 24-hour service, seven days a week, and you know, there are costs that go along with those responsibilities. These are, again, it's more of our challenges. We, we collect 25% about taxes, but if, if there's a tax appeal, that's one that goes back to the taxpayer, we pay the whole thing. So we're required to fund that. Last year, we had $3.3, $3.2 million in 2017 and $3.3 in 2018. So you, that's money that comes back from taxpayers that we have to struggle with in order to maintain and manage the tax rates. Other challenges that we have, just generally compared to us, compared to other municipalities, we have a paid fire department, not all municipalities do, many do in Essex County, but not all. We have a wide array of services that we provide, and we'll see that in a little bit later. The, we, we, in West Orange, provide many, many services that other municipalities, just plain and simple, don't provide. We have basically a bedroom community, we have, while we have, we have some great commercial properties, as a percentage of our total, it's not, it's not very high. So we rely on residential property base, which represents about 80%. And so whatever we do, whereas other municipalities have been able to enjoy the tax benefits of having commercial, a lot of commercial properties, it's not something that we have Having said that, in 2018, we're expecting a 2% increase, and that locks in a 10-year average for the township of 1.1% annually, which is a remarkable number. When you think about over a 10-year period that are, that we've been able to maintain a relatively stable tax rate. It's so remarkable when you look at all of the municipalities in the county, you look here over here, this is West Orange, over a 10-year period, and all other municipalities have had rates of increase that are higher than West Orange, and not just marginally higher. When you look at the numbers, the average for municipalities in Essex is 32%. And the average statewide, when you look at 565 municipalities, is 40%. So the stabilization of the tax rate in West Orange really is remarkable in the state of New Jersey, and I suspect if we looked nationwide, it would be exemplary there as In fact, out of the 565 municipalities in the state of New Jersey, only 24 municipalities have better records than West Orange. And many of those towns are small towns where they have, you know, an airport and they've got 10 people living in 10, and that here, very small, small, small towns. So it really, West Orange really does stand out, particularly because of its size, to be able to be in this position. Now, taxes, the average taxpayer in West Orange this year will pay $274 per month in municipal taxes, municipal share. And that represents, 33% of that represents the cost for our police department, 25% of that, the cost for our fire department, 14% for health services, and 28% for other quality of life services. And so $274, which if you think about that, by the way, that's, that's, that's a $5 increase per month over, over 2017. So in terms of the municipal rate, so the average taxpayer will pay $5 per month more than it did last year.
Mr. Graves, when you say average property owner, do you mean residential or all property?
Residential.
Just residential?
Yeah, this is just residential. Now, when you take, when you consider what you pay for your car payment, your cellphone, or your internet, $274, which is not insignificant, and I'm not suggesting that it isn't significant, but in comparison to other expenses and things in your life, if you, I think in terms of value, I think it's easy to see that we were able to provide police, fire, health department, public works, recreation, library services, for an amount that many people pay more than that for their cable bill. It's tremendous value that you get from your municipal tax dollar. Now, the services that are included, and I'm not going to go through all these, but everybody knows the typical services that, certainly that you receive here in West Orange. What you may not know is what you, what other towns get. Our services are quality services, we, you know, we get twice weekly garbage pickup. Many towns don't. Some towns don't provide it at all. So these, these are services, they're a legitney service, things of that nature. If you look at this chart, if you, right back, remember, there's a graphic on these different services. We took a look at the different municipalities and what services they provided and what West Orange provided. And if you see the top line, the top line is all the services that West Orange provides. And every town that provides the same service has the little graphic. And you can see the graphic on this, on the other towns don't, in no way reach the level that you, the services that you get here in West Orange. So that's, that doesn't mean that anything other than perhaps in their communities, those services aren't, aren't the services that are wanted or needed, but certainly in terms of full service, you can always say, there's very few, very little that West Orange is not providing that other towns provide, for sure. And there's certainly other towns that don't provide the services that you get here in West Orange.
Mr. Graves, can I just ask you a quick question? I haven't seen any of the other municipalities provide senior services. Is that accurate? I know Montclair has a full-time senior services director, so I'm surprised not to see him.
I'll check on that. I did not do this slide, but I'll check on the background of that.
I'm going to say, the icon is that's just before the library in West Orange, it's Spider-Man. And it's, yeah, in front of the library.
Fireworks. Okay, things, so what are we doing now? Talked about some of the stuff we're calling past and the situation where we're doing. Some of the things that we have worked on, we've established a desire, and this year we're going to be moving forward with customer service training for our employees. And this is, this list is in no particular order, just things you're trying to kind of stream of consciousness when you sit down and start thinking about what we're doing here and what we're able to do in our budget this year. We're making improvements to the township's website, we're probably, that's going to be revamped over the next year, online payments, we have, we have been moving more and more towards that, and it's certainly become more robust in the, in the year to come. We're looking at a new phone system, we were going to do energy aggregation again and enter into the county consortium. The, we've provided four new bus shuttles and jetties over the past couple of years that's going to, that have basically has put us in a position to add another route at the end of last year and for this year, throughout the whole year, our sixth route. We've done some, many increases in terms of IT, purchasing software, and we're also funding the update of the master plan. We're fully funding, as I said, the sixth jetney route this year. We see an increase in funding to the library. We initiated a participatory budget program, which we're, we have, we have four members of the community that have submitted proposals for projects, for capital projects to be, we're going to deal with later in the year. So that, we're very encouraged by that. Again, we talked before, grants are up by 300%. We've had an increase of funding to the joint meeting. We look forward now, the Edison redevelopment pilot begins in 2018. Hotel and diner near completion, and we've, we've just come, come into the back end of centralizing our HR and payroll processing. We're formalizing, in the process of formalizing, a central, a centralized information technology department. We funded community emergency response team this year for the first time, increased health inspections, expanded senior transportation, the funding for that, which we'll see later in the summer, and provided recreation field use supervision for more, for non-structured supervision of the use of our fields, and the OSPAC Summer Series. Also tonight, we're asking the council to introduce a capital budget for 2018, which leads us to question, what do we do with our last capital budget? So a few things here about what we did last year, and then about what we're proposing moving forward. Firehouse improvements, the engineering is ongoing, pool ground improvements, we did, they completed centralized copy machines at the police department, that's completed, camera system replaced, and so on. I'm not going to read them all, but these are areas of almost everything that we capitalized last year have been completed or is in the process of becoming completed. The only thing that's left outstanding where, is that in terms of not being completed, the firehouses, which we have, the engineering is ongoing, we have sewer line improvements, which we're working on the RFPs, although those are big jobs. Pool handicap access is actually in design, we expect to go to bid later this year, and replacement of construction software, and that, and that's pending evaluation of some of the different software possibilities that we have out there. So when you talk about capital, the question is, well, Jesus, what's, what is the situation with borrowing money for capital expenses? So I put a couple of charts together from 2008 through 2017. This first one is a chart basically looking at our debt ratio. And what the debt ratio is, you take your debt and you divide that by your equalized value of all your properties, so basically all the assets in town, because the properties are considered our assets. And the law says that we can have no more than 3.5% of debt to our equalized value of our properties. Well, if you look down this, the green bar down here, and the bottom, this is, this is our debt here, it started out in 2008 at .76, and now we're at point, 1.259 at the year end. There's a second line here, which, which comes out at 1.15, and the difference between those two are the redevelopment. So we, we have bond anticipation notes that we haven't borrowed on yet, but we will be borrowing on. That's a part of our obligation for the redevelopment. And the redevelopment, we will, we'll then repay those back to us. So they're a little bit of a different animal. Doesn't mean it's not as important, doesn't mean that it doesn't impact our debt ratio, it does, but, but, but it's different than our other debt, because the other debt, we have to go back to our taxpayers to pay that off. This debt is being paid off by the redevelopment. So it's just important to, just to see and to get a, get a sense of the scale of the difference and, and what it impacts. So you can see from this that right now, we're about a third of what we're allowed to get by statute. So our, we're, we're in no way in any type of danger or any, any area in terms of our debt that we should be overly concerned about. We're always concerned about debt, you know, one likes to borrow money, nobody likes to, to pay the debt service and that's something. But, but debt, one of the reasons you have debt is become, is somewhat philosophical because you, you have debt because you're taking, you're an improvement that's going to last 20 years, and by using debt, the people that use it actually pay it off, as opposed to when you don't, if you didn't do any debt at all and you built a road today that's going to last 20 years, and you paid, everybody here paid for it, the people that use it over the next 20 years come and go, and they, they will not necessarily. So it's a philosophical question, but where we are at this point in time, we're, we're in a relatively low area. There's another metric with this that I like to look at as well, and I think it shows the stability that we have in terms of, yes? Sure.
What's the number you're using for the redevelopment line? Is it 3.2 million or is it 6.5 million?
6.3.
6.3?
6.3.
So, refresh my memory, please. The redeveloper is going to be repaying all 6.3 million? The redeveloper is going to be repaying all 6.3 million. I thought...
Well, the redeveloper is going to be paying, the funds to pay that off will be coming from the project, the increased receipts from the project. Half of it comes directly from the developer, having nothing to do with the operations of the project. The other half is going to come back from the increase in receipts from the pilot. So, in terms of the cash flow, will cover the entire, between those two sources, will cover the entire amount. Again, I'm not suggesting that it's separate, but I think it's important to take a look at, because it is a different animal. You know, when we report it, we have to report it different, because we have to, we'll be reporting that we're anticipating a certain amount of money that's coming into our budget for their half. And so, it is something that we, that I have to monitor separately, and I just think it's a good idea, and to see the difference. The fact of the matter is, it's not, even with it, you're not looking at a significant difference with or without it. So, I don't...
Yes, and so this graph does not include the $9 million of capital budget that's being increased to...
Does not, does not. Yeah, and the reason, the reason it's not, is these are all net figures. These are all based on, at the end of the year, after everything you've increased and also everything you've paid off. So, right now, we're going to have one tonight with the $9.5 million. So, that's going to increase that number to about, I think it's 1.35. But, well, over the next year, we're also going to be paying down about $7 million, $6 to $7 million. So, that $6 to $7 million we're paying down is going to bring that number down. So, really, it's, you could, the best point in time to pick is 1231, because that's when you have to settle all debt by then, and you pick that. So, that's what we use, and that's why we, that's why these numbers are outlined the way they are.
Tommy Green.
Sure.
Jack is also not here tonight because he's celebrating his graduation as well. And so, when we get to our agenda about the conference, I mean, the update on redevelopment, since Jack's not here, last week we touched a comment and really discussed the pilot and the difference. Can we talk about that?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So, there's another, there's another metric that I like to look at, and I think it's an indicator of stability, and that's your debt ratio to your budget. If you look, if you look back to 2009, in 2009, our debt was approximately 87% of the budget at that time. And if you can see over time, now, this is a larger scale, so you can see a little bit more the difference with the redevelopment versus not. If you look at without the redevelopment, it's 87%. Now, we're at 91%. Last year, we were at 87%. So, as a percentage of our budget, we're, our debt is pretty much the same. And that's, that really shows the stability that you're not, we're not, we're not using debt over our budget or our budget over using debt, and so there's balance. And I think that's a good indicator of our ability to manage our debt and our budgets, for that matter. And then, of course, it's up a little bit higher because of the redevelopment debt, so that actually pushes it up to 99%. Good rule of thumb, you know, you certainly would, you know, we like having our debt below our budget, so we're certainly, have been historically good there. And it's just, it's another indicator, and all by itself, it doesn't mean anything, but you start putting these together, these different indicators together, and you say, you know, everything is looking like it's very stable, working well, and think that, you know, we've got a good handle on where we are with that.
Mr. Gross, just a quick question.
Yes.
If you look down at the Y-axis, you see the end, the years actually going down until you get to 2003 and then to 2016. Is that...
Oh, that's just, yeah, that's because I didn't have, I didn't get the date in there.
Is that...
That's, yeah, that's...
So, what should be...
No, that's 2009 to 16. That's just mislabeled, I apologize.
So, it should be 2009, 2010, 11, 12?
Right, yeah, yeah. I apologize. Okay, this is a list of the 2018 capital projects on, for consideration for introduction this evening, and just go through, just highlight, I'm not going to go through each and every one, but $800,000 for redoing of the Soriano Stadium Field Service and Track. It's anticipated that the Board of Education will be funding half of that and repaying half of that back to the township. About $5.3 million in the street resurfacing, $100,000 in LED high-visibility signs. That's the, if you're around, you've seen, basically, they're signs when you, when you go up to a stop sign or to a yield sign, it knows when you're approaching it, and will actually turn on, and you will see lights that go around it, just to get a better attention, particularly in high-podestion areas.
How many signs is that...
We don't know yet exactly. It depends on the type of sign. Some of them are as low as $5,000, some of them are as high as $20,000. So, it depends on the mix. It's not going to be a lot, you know, at first, but it'll be a good sense. We think that it's going to end up being an annual allotment that we'd be looking at. Outdoor facility improvements, Pleasantale Parking Lot, Ice Bumper Car Facility, work on our tennis courts and pool repairs.
Mr. Gross, I have to say, I can't wait for us to be in Ice Bumper Cars.
An Ice Bumper Car.
No, we have skateboards, not even a...
Yes, it is basically where we find, there's a particular field, and I'm not an expert on this one, but I'll tell you, I know a lot about explaining, where you basically have ice, create, create an ice rink, but it's not for ice skating, it's for these bumper cars, basically, that, you know, you would get in and ride, and you can bump into each other. So, it's a, it's a recreation facility. If you go online and look it up, you'll see, it's pretty popular. My kids talk about it. I've never done it, but it is.
And O'Connor Park doesn't actually have ice, because I tried, they use that as for just for your budget, to ice skating, you know, park.
Yes.
Can I just ask you about the Pleasantale Parking Lot improvements? Is that, is that parking lot in between the two commercial areas on the east side of Pleasantale here, Eagle Rock Avenue?
There's a wall deteriorating.
I don't know.
There's a wall deteriorating there.
Across from the, across Pleasantale away from where Pleasantale, Pleasantale used to be?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a pixel wall there?
Well, it's a wall and parking lot improvements. It's deteriorating, it's really bad. Information technology replacing, these are, to some extent, maintenance items are MDT replacements, we try to rotate those in and out. And vehicles, so DPW in particular, we're looking at a couple of front-end loaders, or at least, at least one, and maybe refurbish another, new one. We need those desperately, and other vehicles that have met their useful life. We've been going through and trying to thin out all of our vehicles across the board and get, basically, to where we have a good grouping of vehicles in good condition, and now we're, these are definitely things that are necessary and needed at this point in And other equipment, protective equipment for the fire department, breathing air compressor recharging system for the fire department, a light tower generator, actually, that was something that was asked for by both DPW and by the police department, and we made the decision that they're all, they're going to share, so. And the budget hearing for the 2018 budget and the capital ordinance, there'll be a hearing on June 12, 2018. So, we look forward to seeing you all there.
John, thank you for that. Colleagues, any questions before we move on? Councilwoman Catalina.
Yeah, Mr. Gross, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation. I know I've been bugging you for, since last year, on giving us some kind of detail visually for the public to see so they could break down, so thank you for that. It was a lot more detailed than I had expected, and I know it took you many hours, so, and I appreciate the data from 10 years ago up until we're at now. I think it's important to get that visual, to see how we're progressing. In regards to the capital projects, are we, are we going to be discussing them later tonight, or will we, or would you do that now, or at the hearing?
The actual, the hearing itself is at the next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I guess, I guess the question is if you are inclined to not introduce because of certain, you know, if you want to have, as you, with any ordinance, you, after you go to introduce it, or you have discussions about things as well, so I guess if you, if you want to have that discussion, you certainly can, but the, the vote tonight is obviously just for introduction.
Yeah, okay. So, is that to you, Council President? Do you want me to ask a few questions about capital now, or you want to wait till later?
I have a question on capital.
You can ask it now.
Okay, so, just real quick, so, I mean, I know maybe you could touch base on Soriano Field, because I know just, you know, it's 15, 16 years old. If anyone was present at the Fourth of July festivities last year, the field's really in poor condition. So, now, it's to my understanding, our colleagues over the school board, they'll be paying for half of the bond payment on their end for it, and I know they're trying to get it done over the summer, so it wouldn't affect the fall sports, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're moving forward as if it's going to pass in order to be ready, so that when it does, or if it does, we will be able to pull the trigger and have work start right away. So, yes, we anticipate that the, this is going to get going and be done for next fall season.
Okay, and that consists of also the, the track around it, the rubber around the...
The track will not be done until probably next year in the spring.
Okay, so that won't be this project.
Correct.
This is just for the turf field.
And I say that, that was the last discussion we've had. Now, you know, if, if, it's a, it's a co-op vendor that we're dealing with, so if they come back and say, oh, yeah, they can do it, but the initial responses we've gotten from them, that it doesn't make sense to do that first, so...
All right, so I liked a little, a little more detail talking, because I had a conversation today with Mr. Keough, and I also talked to Mr. Bly. I know Mr. Sear's had a meeting with them this morning, and because of his graduation isn't here to share, but I'd like some details on the breakdown of what that includes up there. I just want to make sure that, because sometimes there's some costs that aren't a cataphor. I think everything is built in, but I want to make sure that, you know, there aren't any other costs that you may...
I can tell you, based on the meeting this morning, and our position is that the cost is not going to increase. They did, they did put, they did put some extra things in, frankly, they added some items to what we originally had asked them for at no charge, and we made it clear that we were very thankful for that.
Good.
But that, and that that was going to be the, the end of any pricing.
Just so the council knows, like, you know, you see a field, so when the, when they, when the vendor, they sell you the Astro or the fields, it's just the field. So, the stitching, the, all the markings on the field are separate, but to my understanding, you know, everything is going to be included, because, you know, because we've used them before and whatnot, so. Okay, so I just wanted to get, if we could just get, have that information at the next meeting. Also, the Ice Bumper Car is a little surprise. I hadn't heard of that project, and Council President was just telling me how, and I'll let her share her story, on how sometimes that's an activity that residents pay for, so that's, are we anticipating that to be a revenue?
To my knowledge, that's not being contemplated.
Okay, I like to have a conversation, a little more detail on that, because I have, you know, I have a little issue with that activity, especially with other improvements. I mean, it's a neat idea, I could see our residents, you know, really enjoying it, but at the same time, I, I don't know, I need to know more about it, and if there's a, if there's a situation where we can create revenue for an activity of that nature.
Yeah, I would, we'll be happy to provide you information. I would suggest you reach out to the mayor.
Okay.
The mayor in particular has taken the lead on, on that project, so he probably, he certainly can give you a lot more details than, than we have at this point in time. But we will, we will get you what you're asking for, but you might want to reach out to the mayor.
And then, I also need more information on the, the other, the four capital projects that are being presented from the public, so I, I need a better understanding how that's to work, and...
I can give you a little overview of it, but you're, the, the next step, now that it's been submitted, is we're going to actually meet with those four individuals and basically get them, explain to them their responsibilities in going out and fighting or gaining support for votes in the general election for these projects. Whichever project receives the most votes, it's anticipated that that would be the project that would be selected for the participatory government or voting.
And what, do we know what the projects are at this point in time?
Yeah, I do, but at this point, I would rather not go out to them until we've actually met with them and make sure that we understand that they mean exactly what they wrote, but they're, and they're, I'll tell you, it's a wide gamut, it's from very, very small to some very, very large. So, but, you know, there're, there's a limit of $400,000, there are limits in place. The next, the next step after that is to come to the council, which we anticipate coming to the council in July with, with, with the projects itself. It's not said that you cannot provide, be provided additional information in the meantime, but that's, that's the timeline, because at some point in time, in, we would, we would be looking in July for council to approve the question for the ballot, the ballot question.
All right, maybe later on, I see we have a lot of folks in the audience, I'd like to talk, to have a conversation at some point with Mr. Lepore to come up here, because, you know, we have a lot of items, we have a lot of needs at our firehouses, and so I'd just like to hear thoughts from him on where he's at with them, a little bit more detail. It doesn't have to be right now, because I see we have a lot of, a lot of, a lot of youngsters here this evening. Hi, guys.
And it's a school night.
And it's a school night. So, but I would like to, Council President, that's okay, I would like for Mr. Lepore to come talk to us to see where he is at with these, with the firehouse projects, to see if, you know, what he, what the plans are for 2018. We had a small snapshot, but I really need a visual on how we're progressing with, with those capital improvements. I mean, it's great to have additional recreational capital improvements, and I know the field is an extreme necessity, but the other items don't sound like necessities, so I just, if you don't mind, I just, I need to wrap my head around all that you're asking from us. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Greeno.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Gross, what I would really like to see and like some information on is a five-year capex review. And what I mean by that is going back five years by department and by major purchases of our capex program, to get an idea for longevity, the usage, and how we are performing in capital expenditures for our departments. One, basically, to see if we're providing our employees and residents with safe equipment and the proper machinery and projects to maintain the quality of life in the township of West Orange. So, if I can get that shortly, we can have a conversation, that would be very beneficial for me for looking at the capital expenditures going in this year's budget.
Sure, I'll sit with you and get, get an idea of what format you're interested in, but absolutely.
Okay, next, next question is, is talking about Soriano Field and a recreational complex. Basically, you know, it's going to be a 50/50 between the township and the Board of Education. My question is, is that what would be the true expense if the Board of Education had to pay for it all by themselves, if they had to take on the full expenditure of the, of the complex and not the township putting in anything for, for the project? That's a question I have.
Well, I mean, to the extent that, I guess it would depend on how they approach it, but I'll certainly can sit down with you on that. but I'll certainly can sit down with you on that. We can give, we can provide council that information.
Okay, and talking about the current construction projects, you know, Mr. Lepore giving us a detailed explanation of, you know, particularly the firehouses and any other public safety facilities that we need to look into, and also any things I'd like to hear from Mr. Lepore, or projects for his facilities, DPW-related issues for capital expenditures. So hopefully, Mr. Lepore can give us, you know, some conversation and backup on what's going on, and also how we're implementing our complete streets, how we're rolling that out, and what additional expense that will be for us, or what we can get, you know, say for street, pedestrian, street light, level lighting, you know, the striping and the speed controls. So, that's what I'd like to know, too. So, thank you, Council President.
Councilman.
I would just like to say that, that, thank you for starting to provide some details on, you know, the $9 million in capital programs. I certainly would like to get more details, I'd like to get the presentation which has the list, because we, I don't believe we've gotten anything other than the bond ordinance, so would definitely like to-
I'll send you the list, too.
Okay, I would appreciate that, and then we could have a lot more time to discuss it at the next council meeting.
Which is when the hearing is. Councilwoman Cirillo?
Yeah, just a few questions, Council President, and thank you very much. We talked about debt ratio, 1.125. With the anticipated capital improvements, passage of this extension of funds, have you figured out how much that 1.25 would increase by?
Yeah, it's going to go to about 1.35 initially.
Okay.
And that's going to go down over the, over the course of the year, as we, as we pay down debt, so it's, you know, it's going to go down. It will not get back to, to 1.25, but it's certainly probably going to get back, it'll get down to the 1.2s, high 1.2s.
At what point do you expect it to get back down to, to current level?
Well, it's, if you look at the current level, whether we actually, when we actually hit that, I don't know, the answer to that.
Okay.
If you looked at the chart, you could see that from, while, while we have been trending upwards, it's a slow trend upwards, and, you know, as our, as our needs get addressed at some point in the future, and if we can find our way to pay down more, then, then, that will come down. You know, it's a matter, it is a matter of balance. Especially if you look at, again, the, the comparison I made of, of the debt to our budget, we're, we're pretty stable, and it, and I think that's a, you know, I think that while it is certainly a goal to keep our debt ratio as level as we possibly can, we certainly also, at the other side of it, when we can't, want to make sure that we don't go too far high, and clearly we're not. So, we're, we're, we're in a good level. Again, our, our goal is always to try to figure out a way to reduce our debt, but that has to be balanced with the needs, and obviously, that's your, that's your call, you know, in terms of how much money that you want to spend, or you feel that you need to spend, versus not, not spending it and keeping the, the debt ratio lower.
It's a policy decision.
It's certainly a policy decision.
Right, now with the interest rates expected to increase, are we still within that target, that additional .10?
Well, the, the interest rates don't impact that.
Okay.
Interest rates certainly an issue, it's absolutely an issue. It's a forced way to pay more, you know, to get more into the budget for debt service, and if rates go down later on, you might, you might have that money then to, available to pay for, paying down the debt, but that's, that's a-
It's a floating interest rate?
What I mean?
Floating interest rate?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the short-term debt is.
Yeah.
We won't, we won't likely be going long-term for a while.
And in, on the Soriano Field issue, will we see like a shared services agreement come up?
Yes, there should be an agreement that's going to be presented to the council.
Okay, yeah. And the other questions are on the budget, I guess we can ask that later, okay? So, I appreciate the time, thank you, guys.
Councilman?
If I could just follow up on, on some of Councilman Cirillo's comments, one of the things we didn't see, we saw the ratios, which are very interesting, but we didn't see the absolute numbers, and I just wanted to throw those out, because to me, they're of a significant interest. I just have some numbers back to the year in 2010, we had outstanding debt of a little less than $60 million, and if the council approves this current proposal for debt, we will then have outstanding debt of almost $82 million. That would mean an increase since 2010 of over $22 million in debt that we've taken on. That's a 37% increase, just in these eight years. So, I'm, I'm very concerned that even though the ratios aren't showing much of a change, that's a significant change, a 37% increase, and the ratios, the debt ratios have gone from .89% of equalized value up to 1.35%. Again, if we approve this, that's, that's an increase in the ratios of almost 52%. So, we are moving up the, we are moving up the scale, and just want to put that in as part of what we are going to be thinking about as we go through this.
On the policy side, yeah.
Okay, I was going to respond, yes, please.
What I was going to say is that we were fortunate to, to be going through a period of low interest rates, so if we were to take on additional debt, and granted, if we're talking about real numbers, we're allowed to borrow up to 3%,
Right.
Which is how, how many millions of dollars, 3% of equalized value?
About, 2.7%, 2.7 times what we have now, so, so let's say round numbers, 3 times what we are now.
Three times, so we're at 60 million, so it's $180 million, and right now, we're at $60 million. Point that I was making was that, it was a good time to borrow because of the low interest rates, and that's why I asked that question. You know, as we proceed, interest rates are going up, what kind of impact is that going to have now? Because, you know, I looked at the policy issue favorably over the last few years because of that issue, the fact that we're dealing with historically low interest rates. So, so if we were to increase that debt, that, that was a good time to do it as a, as a municipality. But now we have to be very careful in, in how we make these decisions going forward, if, if, if the borrowing is going to cost a lot more money.
And you asked before about whether or not the debt was, was floating or not, and I didn't understand maybe the, the angle that you were coming from, but the, the debt that we've taken on over the past 10 years, we have gone along with those and locked in very low long-term rates, so that's not floating. What will be floating is future debt, because at this point, the future debt is, you're, you're talking about a difference of, of 2% versus 4, 4.5% moving forward. So we're going to probably, we will, my recommendation and what we'll be looking to is keeping our debt short now, so at least stay down in the 2% area.
We have to be more concerned?
And briefly, thank you, and briefly during the budget presentation also, that's one side of the ledger, you talked about paying down the debt as well, so.
And we actually, we actually have been doing that.
Right.
Our debt service, our debt service, what we pay in interest and principal repayment has gone up roughly about 45% in, since 2010. It actually is going down slightly, like $130,000 this year, but it's still up about $2.5 million. So, we have $2.5 million less to pay for, you know, healthcare costs than we did eight years ago. And, so again, that's something else to consider, too, because that's not good.
Thank you, Council.
They're encroaching.
They're getting closer.
We, we get the message, we get the message.
You guys want to go home, or?
Okay. Are we going into, my conference agenda? Okay, can this conversation is going to be continued?
Yep, apologies, save it for conference agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, pending that.
Can we go out of order? I mean, I know that we, yes, please.
I mean, I'm not sure why all these folks are here, but I, but I think as a courtesy, you know, you want to move the agenda and get to the-
We do, it's a resolution, thank you, Mr. Kesar, it is a resolution, that's on our agenda, we're not at that point, but we can talk about the resolution and just go out of order. I don't know, though, do we have to open the meeting officially, open the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, first meeting.
We can do that. Good, okay, let's start the meeting.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with, with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the start ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2, 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Casalino-
Present.
Councilman Cirillo-
Present.
Councilwoman, Councilman Goretto-
Present.
Councilman Krakowiec-
Present.
Council President McCartney-
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The council is now in the public meeting.
At our last council meeting, May 8, we introduced and adopted a resolution in support of six assembly bills that have been passed, and we are on gun viol, I'm sorry, this is about gun violence. We have moved, we adopted a resolution unanimously in support of the six assembly bills. They are moved into the Senate, and the resolution was having the Senate, the Senate move forward on those resolutions. Tonight, the resolution, why we're out of order this evening, is that there is a resolution on our council agenda tonight declaring the first Friday in June to be deemed National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and residents shall be encouraged to wear the color orange to show support to end gun, gun violence and honor the victims of gun violence. So, this evening, we have a population of people here that are in support of this resolution, and I'll just read some of the tenants that are in this resolution. It says, whereas an average of 96 Americans are killed by gun violence on a daily basis, and nearly 13,000 gun-related homicides occur every year, Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. Whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people, the officials of the Township of West Orange, including the mayor and township council, value public safety as highest responsibility in the service of the residents and township of West Orange. A national coalition of organizations have designated the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor Hadia Pendleton, a Chicago teenager who was tragically shot and killed in January in 2013, who should have been celebrating her 21st birthday on June 1, 2018. Group of friends urged classmates to commemorate Hadia's life by wearing orange representing the color worn by hunters to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, symbolizing the value of human life. And whereas National Gun Violence Awareness Day has adopted the wearing of orange as part of the campaign to raise awareness, wearing orange on June 1 will support efforts to raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and the survivors of gun violence. So this resolution, if you have a spokesperson here, I understand, we would like to present to you.
Please introduce yourself. Here, we'll have everyone come up.
Hi, my name is Claire Keels, I'm a citizen of West Orange and also a member of Mom's Demand Action, and on behalf of Mom's Demand Action and our companion organization, Every Town for Gun Safety, I want to thank you for adopting this resolution marking Gun Violence Awareness Day. We represent hundreds of individuals in Essex County, many of whom are here, decked out in bright orange today, who have come together to reduce gun violence, and we deeply appreciate that the town council has joined us in honoring the upwards of 35,000 individuals who died in last year in the United States from gun violence. As you're painfully aware, we're living under an epidemic of gun violence in this country, upwards of 96 individuals are dying every day. School shootings like the most recent one in Santa Fe, Texas, are happening at an alarming frequency. So this is something that we all need to join together to stop, particularly for the future of these young people, who, many of whom are here past their bedtime, because this is a very important thing for them, their families, and all of the citizens of West Orange and Essex County. So, again, we thank you very much for taking the time to give this your attention. We also would like to invite the town council and everybody who's here to an Essex County Marks Gun Violence Awareness Day event, which is going to be held on Sunday, June 3, at 4:00 PM in Spata Park in South Orange. There will be a short gathering and rally to bring together individuals who, like all of us, want to honor those who have died in gun violence. So again, we really appreciate your being such a strong partner in our fight against gun violence, and for being so welcoming to our group of young ones, many of whom again are past their bedtime, and doing a wonderful job, and thank you all for coming tonight. One final thing, I do have a little packet of orange ribbons, which I will hand to the chair, and you can all pass those out.
We'll hand this to you, and we invite everyone to come up.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
All right, let's come this way, you can come right through the back here, this is where we typically take and stand right here. Kids right in the front. Here you go. Welcome. And the adults, do we line up in the back? Thanks, Jack. Jack's not here to organize.
Yeah, Jack's not here to organize.
Let's not pass your bedtime.
All right, turn around.
I'm going to stand here.
It's not a good miracle.
Very nice, okay.
Does someone know who I called?
Yes, we'll share.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, so now that we actually officially opened our meeting, we're going to start with public comment. If anyone has a comment, please come. I see library representation here.
Hey. Hello, Robin Barino, Ten Bell Gray Terrace-
Pull them both down, Robin.
Representing the Board of Trustees of the library. Just a few highlights for the next couple of weeks. The library will be attending the street fair on, on June 2, and in addition to providing its general information, will provide information on the summer reading program for children and teens. Registration begins on June 1, and may be done at the library, online, and at the street fair. This year's theme is Libraries Rock. Friday, June 1, the library will hold a film and dessert from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, screening Murder on the Orient Express. Monday, June 4, from 1:30 to 2:30, will be the adult book discussion, the book will be The Light of the World. Copies are available at the library. Saturday, June 9, between 2:00 and 3:00 PM, there'll be a book talk and program presented by Barbara Kukla, who is a West Orange resident journalist and author of Newark Women From Suffragettes to the State House. Check the calendar on the, in the library itself and on the library website, which is wopl.org, for many other activities and programs. And finally, I was asked to remind people that summer hours begin on May 27 through Labor Day, the library is closed on Sunday. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Robyn.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes? Good evening.
Hope you're all in good spirits, that was kind of fun.
Which one, the budget hearing, or the-
(laughing).
Don't, don't, don't pretend. It was almost as much fun naked as it was.
The graphics were very nice. The, I don't know anyone paying $275 a month in taxes. I'd like to have that rate. Yeah, we all would.
Not tax, municipal.
Not the whole, it's not everything they pay.
Not the total, the municipal portion.
Got it.
Which is what we control here.
Got it. So, I'd like to share with you that on May 12 of this year, I attended a lecture at Caldwell University sponsored by the Caldwell Environmental Commission and Sustainable Verona, featuring Doug Tolemy, a professor of entomology at the University of Delaware. Dr. Tolemy enlightened the 110 Ds, and I will share with you a sobering fact, and then share with you something good to do about that. There are currently 432 North American bird species in danger of extinction. The number-one reason is loss of habitat. You see, the birds require caterpillars as their protein source, and caterpillars require native trees, like oaks, willows, maples, and birches, along with native perennials like milkweed. Current discoveries by science is showing us that our zoning laws are not keeping up with the requirements for biodiversity that sustain human life. Unfortunately, we have preserved only islands of forest, which are crowded around by houses and buildings with monoculture lawns and often trees that are non-native, like Bradford pear, or Norway maple, barberry, honeysuckle, forsythia, and others that support little to no life. We can and should fix this. I've asked you to consider the resolution for an appraisal for preservation of 12 acres of forest on Ridge Road for the reasons I have mentioned and more. The property is the last piece of undeveloped open space on the first Wachang Mountain in West Orange, and contains a 100-year-old forest of magnificent native trees of many varieties, including a rare and large elm tree. The property sits on a blind curve where traffic is often backed up during the day. The property, while not suitable for condominiums, could be subdivided into five two-acre lots, and if so, will no longer prevent egregious stormwater runoff onto the curves of Mount Pleasant Avenue below it. The 100-year-old stone wall at the entrance to Ridge Road provides character, safety, and beauty to West Orange. In response to Susan McCartney's previous objection to maintaining the beautiful old wall, I would say that it would be an act of love and respect for our history if our town would set aside a small amount of money every 100 years to do so. The resolution for an appraisal was tabled in September of 2017 in order for our attorney, Mr. Kizer, to assess any problem with the use of the private road, and he has informed the council that he has no objections. The property would be available to the public for passive recreation, such as walking. We can discuss this later if and when the appraisal meets our approval. Each of the town council members has expressed support for preserving this property as valuable habitat, except for Council President McCartney. Each has expressed support for the baby step of an appraisal. Joe Krakowiec requested that the resolution be placed on the agenda this evening for a vote. However, Council President McCartney has instead placed the matter as an item for discussion at the end of the meeting. Council President McCartney, you send a mixed message to the public when you use your power to thwart attempts to preserve trees, especially since you are the liaison to the Environmental Commission. Your role in that position requires a predisposition to preserving trees. Therefore, I request that you allow a floor motion tonight to vote on the resolution to hire an appraiser. I would appreciate it if the other council members would support this. Thank you all for acting promptly on what is a wonderful opportunity to protect our town's biodiversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Did you wind it off? Go ahead, I'll follow you. You're fine.
Thank you. Ladies first. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you very much for accepting me. My name is Marlene Martin, and I live at Rent a House. I'd like to ask Councilman Barino a question. Some time ago, there was talk about receiving maybe computers in the senior living, and I was just wondering if there's any update on that.
Computers at the senior center at Rent a House? Thank you. We usually take all these questions and then respond after we hear everything?
Sure, sure. The other, the other concern I have is that when we were given the survey, not everybody got the survey, number one, in Rent a House. And of course, it's not people who earn $100,000. They're much lower in income. They didn't, but some of the people that did get it, because it wasn't given to us, it wasn't given to us that we would have it, and I was very concerned about that. I had to seek out where was that survey, and what can I do about it? When I filled it out, I found out that a lot of it does not pertain to anybody living in senior housing or senior people. There was a lot of skip this, okay, here, add this in, skip this, skip that, because we didn't own houses, because it doesn't pertain to us. When I went to go to the survey, I wanted to be picked up. I was told that I did not have transportation to go to the high school to fill out that application, that survey, which I felt, I was, I just was very upset. And then the other concern I have is the busing, transportation. Instead of getting better, it's getting worse. We were supposed to go to Alice in Wonderland up at the junior high school. Well, the day of the show, we were told the bus wasn't coming. It's like, what is this? You know? It's, it's a concern. There was another bus issue, but I, it skips my mind at the moment. But I wanted to address this because I'm a little younger, being a senior citizen, and I try to get people to come out, and I think it's important, and I love where I am, and I love the people, and I want the best for us, and we're not quite there. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a folder up here, I'm not sure.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Oh, that was from Claire.
That's Lawrence Vidalas. Prospect Avenue in West Orange. As usual, I came with my comments, and then after hearing others and seeing the presentation, I started taking more notes and had a few more comments. So, I appreciate the budget presentation. I'm ready to move to West Orange, and I live here already. It looked great. It's amazing, there is like, there's nothing wrong when you look at that presentation. All the bar, all the lines are going up, all the numbers are good. It looks, it looks beautiful. A little too good-to-be-true, maybe, and the lesson I learned early in life is that it possibly could be too good-to-be-true if it looks too good-to-be-true. And graphics don't seem to represent some of the views that the past public, the resident had stated, that there are a lot of issues that we have to work with. Councilwoman Casalino, I really appreciate your comments on the bumper, bumper cars on ice. You know, I'm curious who's building it, who manufactures it. I tried to look up some information. You know, I'm an early childhood educator, so I'm always worried about traumatic brain injury and all kinds of stuff. I don't know how much insurance costs the town to insure a rink like that, who's gonna maintain it, what's gonna happen in the offseason, is it a full year? We're not gonna be making money on it, so it's a recreation part of our town. Council, Councilman Barino, I appreciate you bringing up the ideas about the high school, and perhaps is this a referendum item instead of simply being a council vote? Most towns in Essex County put issues that are related to schools, even shared services, on a referendum, so that us taxpayers can address that and have a say. And I'm interested to find out about what happens if the Board of Ed does assume the upkeep, the 100 percent. You know, what rates are they gonna get? I appreciate Mr. Councilman Serrano's comments with regards to being careful about taking on more debt. You've spoken a lot about that in the past, so I think that's very relevant. We just can't live on credit as much as we can. Maybe we can turn the shop West Orange card into a credit card and start making money off interest, but I don't know. Okay, so, those were my budget comments. So, I know there are some icons with regards to recycling and seniors, all the cute little graphics. I work in Livingston, I know that there's recycling there. Perhaps not a recycling center, but they recycle a lot more, plastic bags, number fours, styrofoam, things that we don't recycle. That's not reflected in that graph. That's just one little sample, so. Okay, so, my comments. I know Mrs. Melanga spoke about the area on Ridge Road, and we're hoping to get that your yes vote, to get an appraisal. I think one way to look at it is that it's just an overlay. It's just to give us a seat at the table. It's not saying we're gonna build something there. It's not saying it's not blighted. It's just to get the appraisal, I think, you know, whether it's $1,500 or $2,000, it's easy enough just to have the appraisal. I think it's good for us to know what the value is on that land and that we should preserve it. We've been getting rid of so much land lately. So, I'm with Our Green West Orange, of course, a brief update on what we've been doing. We were invited to present at West Essex Highlands last week. The presentation was very well-attended, and the residential advocacy group, We Care, had invited us, and we shared information with them about the loss of the possible 5,000 trees of the West Essex Highlands for condo units for the Wolf family. So, we're gonna keep working with them. I know the people in attendance appreciated Councilman Krakowiec coming and giving a presentation on affordable housing, and there was a little threatening email on Facebook from the mayor telling or asking, requesting council members not to attend. So, I appreciate Dr. No, as he's so affectionately referred to, as actually saying, "No, I'm gonna go, and I'm elected by residents, so I'm gonna make my voice heard and support their concerns." We also hosted a presentation at Total Wine up at the Blighted Essex Green Shopping Center, and a number of organizations came out, including West Orange Cares About Schools, Stop for Nikhil came out, Badlani Family, SEIU, 32 PGA, the union that provides services or used to provide services for Executive Drive. Essex Rising was there. The West Orange Public Library was invited, as well as the West Orange African Heritage Organization. And it was nice to get together and talk about issues and their groups and what they're working on, and how we can connect and build West Orange and make it a much stronger, better place. Mr. Krakowiec came. He presented the mayor's 2018 annual budget, which people found fascinating. And when you see it in numbers, and the bar graphs weren't quite going up the whole way, some were going down, it was a really nice reality check for a lot of residents to see what's, what's going on in their town. We'll continue, Our Green West Orange will continue to make its presence known, building its core base and advocating for issues that may have been presented as transparency, but we're seeing that it's not as transparent as it should be. We welcome residents to join us, www.rgreenwestorange.org, and there's a subscribe page. You can get emails. We talk about safety, environment, trees, taxes, businesses, schools, advocacy, development, volunteering, affordability across our town, our county, and our state, and we're all volunteers. It's a place where people can make plans to go out and not plans to get out.
Time's up.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, council members. My name is Anthony Campana, last name is C.
Welcome.
C.A.M.P.A.G.N.A., Glen Side Drive, West Orange. First of all, just thank you guys for having us tonight. The presentation on the budget was great. It's kind of what brings me here tonight, so I was fortunate enough to be appointed, I believe, the first member in a few years, to the West Orange Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. So, on behalf of the committee of one right now, I just wanted to present kind of a little bit about what the hope and goal of the committee is, and also to submit first draft of the executive summary of the 2018 budget. I would love to get Mr. Gross's full presentation to be incorporated. And just very high-level, the hope of the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee is to produce each year a very simple-to-read and easy-to-understand executive summary of the budget that just goes over each section. The committee, hopefully, is gonna be objective in its approach, to just bring a very clear and concise view of how the town is allocating the spending, where the decisions are being made, and how the citizens are being kind of taken care of, so to speak. So, I prepared the 2018 version. I hope that we can kind of have some active dialogue along those lines. And it's great to hear kind of some of the feedback already being presented. I know I had submitted a few notes before the first reading of the budget. Jerry talking about the CapEx, that was a great note to be, to be included, so we're really hopeful that we can start to kind of get a little bit more clarity in the tracking and planning process. And then the ideas just around kind of how we can attract new membership to the committee itself. Very active in the community. As a new member, my wife and I moved here about a year ago, so we're very thrilled to be a part of a young and thriving community, which is great. And we're starting to see more and more faces and families like us around town. We came from the city, we still work in the city, we use public transportation and kind of as an access hub, and Jerry and I see each other every morning on the train, which is great. So, the hope is, is that we, as a town, can continue to kind of reflect the changing demographic and just keep up with that as part of our community and our makeup. So, that's really the reason for my being here today, was just to submit kind of my first take, and I say my, the committee's first take, and I'm hopeful that each of the town council members will take up Resolution 279-9, which was voted in, excuse me, voted in past 11/24/2009, so we're a little over a decade in, where you guys have the ability to appoint your own members and representatives to the West Orange Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. So, I welcome any of the people who represent your constituency, who you think would be a good fit. Welcome the support and the help as well, and hope that if you guys have any questions, you feel free to reach out. I hope it's an open dialogue across the entire budgeting process.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you guys for your time. I'll leave these, so you guys can grab them.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Want to pass them?
Yeah.
Thanks, Sam. Any other comments?
Earlier today, Councilman Krakowiec had emailed me some questions, so I just wanted to take this time to respond to them, because I think it would be enlightening for all the council members to hear the responses. First of all, it was, there was a question about the zoo master plan. We are accredited by three national agencies, the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, the Zoological Association of America, and America... of America, and America and, oh, the Humane Society, sorry. As a member of AZA, we are required to do a master plan update, so that's the process that we're in. There's been some confusion about what a master plan is, and I can understand that because the initial presentation that was made by the consultants that we hired was a little unclear. So hopefully I can kind of right the ship tonight. A master plan is not an expansion plan. A master plan is to take a look at what your facility looks like today, what shortcomings it has, what can be done to address those shortcomings, and then possibly plan for the future so that the facility remains viable. So at this point of the process, we have been taking comments from the public. All those comments have been given to the consultants and we are now culling through those comments and working on a plan or working on, not a plan, but working on another step in the plan before an actual plan is presented, if that makes sense. So, so one of the questions was about expansion. Anything that was, anything that's on the drawing board now is within the current boundaries of Turtleback Zoo. The only thing that leaves the boundaries of Turtleback Zoo is the train tracks that go into South Mountain, well, actually, they go into the Orange Reservoir property, which is owned by the City of Orange. Essex County has an agreement with the City of Orange to gain access to that property. So any of the improvements that you currently see, obviously the Flamingo exhibit that's currently under construction, all of that is within the boundaries of Turtleback A later email that Councilman Kukoviac sent was about a proposed parking deck, which would be located, if you're familiar with the zoo, if you look between the Ronald Mount Education Building and the entrance to the Orange Reservoir walking path, that's where our maintenance yard is for the zoo. That's the proposed site for a new parking deck. We are currently working with surveyors and engineers to see if that space is adequate enough to locate a parking deck. I'm sure everyone would agree that parking is at a premium at Turtleback Zoo, and anything that we can do to keep cars from, or get cars onto the property without driving through the neighborhoods would be beneficial. And we believe if it's another parking deck that is similar in size to the two that currently are on the property, that that would make a huge dent in addressing the parking and the traffic issues in that area. Another question was about a culvert on Northfield Avenue, and I had talked to the councilman earlier. I talked to our Public Works Department. They're going to look at that culvert. It's Walker Road and Northfield Avenue. The initial guess, and I'm going to say guess because I didn't look at it yet, is that that culvert probably needs to be cleaned. And if that's the case, we will address that because there have been some flooding issues in that area, which obviously with all the rain that we have, you've been able to see that pretty clearly. Getting back to the master plan, I don't have a timeline. Like I said, all that information has been given to the consultants. And when they come back at another milestone point, I'm sure I'll be here telling you the status and any date for any kind of public meeting. For zoo projects, probably about 95% of the improvements made to Turtleback Zoo have been made with grant money from the Open Space Trust Fund, New Jersey Green Acres, contributions from corporations or individuals, because we have had individuals provide us with funds and some of them are significant contributions. That last 5% would be through the county's capital budget. And then another grant source is the Zoological Society, which is a fundraising arm for Turtleback Zoo. And I'm sure if we do any additional improvements to the site, that that mixture of grant money predominantly would be followed because the county executive does not like to spend the county's money. He likes to spend other people's money. So, well, I mean, if you look at the zoo, we have PSCNG as a sponsor and Prudential as a sponsor, Wells Fargo, Coca-Cola, I mean, the list is pretty extensive. So we do have some major sponsors there. And then as far as, there was a question here about improving the township's relationship with the county, I think you always can make, there's always room for improvement, but I believe that our engineering departments work hand in hand. They communicate very, very clearly, as do the police department and the sheriff's office. I can say that over the last couple of weeks, there were a couple of blips because of traffic problems along Northfield. We had tried something a little different, which didn't go over very well. And then after discussions were made and it, or actually a decision was made to not do those, the message didn't get to the rank and file people on the ground so that the next day, when the same thing happened, they reverted back to what they were not supposed to do. But now everyone has been informed, and I think moving forward, there will be a more clear line of communication between the mayor and the county executive, the sheriff, and the police department regarding the traffic around there. And then finally, with the intersection on Pleasant Valley Way with Alyssa Drive, everything is pretty much in place for that project to begin. We are waiting until school is out for the summer before anything is done. That way we don't disrupt any kind of traffic patterns along there. And then also this summer, Eagle Rock Avenue is part of our resurfacing project. So you'll see some activity along Eagle Rock Avenue. That's all I have.
That's funny.
Question?
I had a quick question.
In regards to the traffic, so will you have more county personnel out in directing traffic on the weekends? Like, I know you have a big event coming up.
Well, yeah, Open House is the, is on June 2nd. When we do have events of that magnitude or when we see that the weather is going to be, is going to be sunny, then they do assign more officers to that area.
Okay. Because I know personally, I know I stay away from that area because it gets so crazy. And it's great, the attendance in that is up, but I know from talking to residents over in that neighborhood, I know you're trying to address these items.
And traffic, traffic and parking is part of the master plan. So that, as we take in the comments, and they have been, the consultants have been looking at traffic patterns. They've been looking at parking patterns. So they're also looking at staffing, how we assign sheriff's officers in the area. So all that is part of their investigation and their due diligence. So that, like I said, that is part of the master plan.
Which, which will take time, but I'm glad to hear that having additional personnel for this summer at least will hopefully alleviate some, you know, keep the traffic moving. So thank you.
Yep.
Councilman.
Mr. Puglisi, thank you again. Appreciate it. I just have a quick question. I know how you said, you made an example, how the county executive likes to spend other people's money and not our own. Well, I'd like to know if it's, if it's possible, Anthony, could you get, just for Turtleback Zoo, just for the complex, since with the construction, the expansion, all that, is it possible to get a breakdown of how many, how the dollars were allocated? Like, say, what was Green Acres money, what was corporate sponsors, and what is the county output for the project? Is that possible to get?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to get that. It'd be a good idea to just sort of residents too can see that how much is Green Acres money that if we don't go after it, somebody else is going to go after it.
Right.
And so I'd just like to get an idea, and that would be a really good tool for us to have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm going to close this portion of the agenda and respond. We kind of went out of order. Robin, before you leave, thank you for the updates at the library. I do understand there is a book sale also on, at the street fair, the Friends of the Library. Okay. Talk about that. Thank you. Okay. Any, Councilman, okay.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, my colleagues. Marlene, I'd just like to answer your question. Okay, you can, you can stay. I'd just like to answer your question. Thank you for coming to the council. With the, you know about all the new capital projects we're doing at Rent a House, the painting, the new floor, the carpeting, and the drawings and the presentations we'll be ready very, very shortly. So you'll see, you know, enhanced security, enhanced coverage of security guards at longer hours. So that's all coming on. And including that, we will be updating the computer accessibility and the equipment. And I'm sorry it's not done, but it will be done very shortly. And, you know, and I know my colleague, Councilwoman Castellano, can answer your inquiries about, about the senior survey. But a lot of things are happening at Rent a House. And the one thing I'd like to bring up to you and what we've been working with is that we need to reconfigure the residents' board that used to be there a few years ago because when we had a residents' board with leadership and meetings, we were able to, I don't know if you ever saw it, that there was a monthly newsletter, thanks to Council President McCartney, who brought me the copy, that used to be produced. So if you can get a bunch of people together to start organizing the residents' committee, that would be great because that's how communication would flow. That's how the monthly newsletter can be done and also be a conduit for communications. For example, when the buses didn't show up, what we found out at our last council meeting is that there was a miscommunication, you know, one comment was made, another comment was made, Rent a House made a comment, Degnan House made it. So it was back and forth. We want to get the board back together. So if you could work on that, and I know the residents are interested, and please reach out to me. I represent the council on the, on the Rent a House board. So just reach out to me and I'll do whatever I can to help you pull it together.
What's your number?
My number, 973-902-1200.
902?
1200.
Yeah, everybody knows it.
I'll give you my.
Can I send the message and you can get back to me?
Absolutely.
Thank you so very much.
Absolutely. Thank you for everybody for coming tonight. Particularly, you know, Anthony, thank you. I see you at the train station enough. I could talk to you on the train if you ever want to spend the whole train right talking, especially about CapEx and we can't talk about that. But thank you for the presentation you dropped off tonight. Of course, I'll read this and I can, I'll have questions. I know how to get you, and I'm sure my council colleagues could too. You, Sally, you know, preservation, environmentalists and everything, things that we all have to look into and things that we carefully have to analyze, not just, you know, but we need to pull it all together and, you know, do everything we can for our environment. And, you know, residents need to be involved. And I thank everyone. Lauren, thank you for coming and people. So, and thank you to my wife for making the library presentation. So thank you, Council President.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Duke it out.
You go first. I'm still, I'm reading this on her.
I'll go first. Yeah, and you know, Anthony, in the spirit of exchanging phone numbers, can I have your phone number too? I'm just kidding. You don't have to give it to me on camera.
I'll give it to you.
We exchanged, we exchanged later. Yeah, it's, it's refreshing to see, coming up with my 20th year, 20th year of living in West Orange, and it's refreshing to see a community engagement still at its high and all the new residents moving in, becoming involved and educated. I know with this issue of the Highlands, the fact that we're revisiting this issue just opens up like, it's kind of like, it's kind of like opening up a textbook. I mean, we've been addressing this issue since like, as far back as I can remember, 2005. And some of the newer residents in town don't know like the advocacy that has gone towards trying to preserve as much open space as we can in that, in that part of town and for the residents to live in the neighborhood. You know, we, the principle is a risk management, risk management with respect to, to legal action. You know, we don't stay at home because the mayor send a letter or threatening email or texts, just because risk management, the principles of risk management dictate that, you know, we shouldn't compromise. The township's a legal position in a lawsuit that is active in any way. And I think that doing so is a disservice to the residents that have elected us. So you have to really try to walk that line between being transparent and, and informative, but at the same time also keeping that in mind that, you know, we may be putting our treasury at risk through compromising our legal position. So that's why I ended up staying home that day. Doesn't mean that I didn't really oppose things. I saw the back and forth and it kept us informed as, as, as this process moves forward. So that made some valid points, valid points. And again, going back to Anthony with respect to the budget, thank you very much for being so proactive and I'm looking forward to reading your report as well. I just started glassing through it. You make some great points. And it's information that really helps us up here make the decisions that we make. And, you know, ground yourself on facts, ground yourself on numbers. Look at the numbers. And if you have questions, we have a well experienced CFO. I can, I've known John 25, close to 25, 20 years, and he's one, he's one of the best, you know, and I truly believe that. You know, you don't have to share the opinions, but I know that because I know what he's, he's capable of and what he's done, not only in South Orange, but here in town. And whenever I ask a question, kind of understands the angle. We're both public administrators. We have master's degrees in public administration, so it kind of gets me and why I'm asking certain things. So I definitely certainly appreciate it. But ground yourself on numbers. And Lauren, you know, it's, we do the graphics just to try to, because some of this stuff can become very complicated. Talk about ratios and percentages or equalized values and all that. I think graphics just help assist us and better tell that story. But at the end of the day, just let's look at the numbers and make the right decisions for the municipality going forward. I'm just so happy to continue to be a member of this wonderful community, taxpayer and homeowner, and seeing our properties continue to rise in value. And, you know, I would support as much open space as we can, going back to that issue of the appraisal. If we can, we should, right? We should. One question that came up this, this afternoon, as I was inquiring on it, was the, we talked about the subdivisions, the five subdivisions. I don't know how much of that lot can be built on or that portion of the town can be built on. So I don't know. Hopefully that helps us depreciate the valley. But at the end of the day, we're not going to know that until we get an appraisal. So, I mean, we don't have to do it radically and like vote now and, you know, but it's something worth discussing very soon. So thank you for, for that advocacy as well. I did take that tree down behind my house, you know, and it hurt me. So now I'm going to try to replace it with three.
Native species.
Yes. But I'm going to be calling you for some recommendations. So anyway, as the councilman stated, thank you very much for coming up here and helping us make the decisions for you. Marlene, you know, for, for representing your fellow residents at the Rent a House. It's a, it's a site that we really like to advocate for. And, you know, I'm starting to think about why, why, why isn't this stuff getting done? We're not asking for too much. You know, you know, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So what I would suggest, Marlene, is that I have a suspicion that we can still, we can still allocate funding to a tenant association once it exists. I believe it's $25,000 a unit times the amount of units. So the tenant association can develop a small budget and perhaps even hire someone, a couple of hours to put together a newsletter and keep everyone informed. So it's something that we'll discuss internally. So again, I appreciate it. Thank you all. Don't want to take too much of your time.
Councilman?
Sure. I'll start with Anthony. I have a budget on the brain right now, reading your very thoughtful letter. So thank you. And I appreciate you volunteering for the advisory committee. I thought there was other people on there because we did have a few people here on the day of the, I'm not sure if you were here when we did our all-day budget presentation from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, going every, over every line. Did you pop in during that time? Yeah. Yeah. So as you could see, you know, a lot of what you're asking here, whether you picked on, up on it from that day or, and you could saw us, our work meetings, more or less a work meeting of us asking these kind of diligent questions and whatnot. And we did receive, you know, answers that evening. And it's, I enjoy the process because having the interaction with the directors that day, I think is important for us to. having the interaction with the directors that day, I think is important for us to evaluate what is going on in the township, under each department, and being able to ask those questions. So I know you saw a, a snippet of it that day. It's a long day, from nine to five, and I go home with my brain hurting. But it, it, you know, it, it definitely is valuable for us, so we can understand the interworking. So, I know a lot of these questions, I already see answers for from conversations we had with that day. So I, I like the way you think. You, you think a lot like us up here. That's great. So thank you for spending the time. And we'll have to, we'll have to get somebody else. I'll see who I can get. But thank you. And, you know, I look forward to the ne- the next hearing, and some more conversations. One thing I will say about, and again, you did a, a great job, and I know you had other, I know you had a lot of other items. You wear a lot of hats during your work week, Mr. Gross. And so, you know, I do agree, some graphs, the little graph items were missing, some other services from other towns. But I, I, I do like the concept. Maybe, we shouldn't put that up on the website yet, that graph, until we check it out a little bit more further. But, but in comparison, and I know this, because having hosted with the PR Commission, realtor open houses, and, you know, comparing services from other townships, especially with our, our garbage contracts. I, I mean, what we pick up at the curb is unbelievable. Where a lot of other towns spend a lot more money for pickup, or, and have to go to the county facilities. And now, Council President, I know you're working on talking with the recycling center. Hopefully, they'll, too, will be having styrofoam available. So those are kind of things we are working on. And, and, but, you know, good pickup, Lauren. There were some, a few items missing. Turning now to senior services, Ms. Martin, thank you for coming down. And yeah, that was really disappointing to hear at last meeting about, you know, we had promised transportation to, like, the plays and whatnot, and then folks didn't get, you know, weren't going to get picked up. They eventually did get picked up. And so Mr. Sayers jumped in and handled that for us, which we appreciate. And so we'll fix that communication. So whenever we promise, i- if, if they're going to cap it, next time it will read on the flyer that, you know, if we get at least ten people, there'll be transportation. They'll have a little more clarity there. But, you know, again, we need communication. We, we didn't do well with in, in our survey, so we're going to get better at that. That, that is something that we are working on. As far as the survey itself, I know we did, I know Susan Giudetta-Ivina is in that, in your building. And I know she did a tremendous job getting a lot of the residents. I'm sorry if, if you, she didn't touch base with you.
A lot of people did not get the survey.
Yes. And so, but I know a lot of people did get it, but I know, don't get so, I know it's frustrating with some of the way the questions were formulated. But we did great, we did get great feedback for folks that are in senior housing. So we do know there are, so, so even though the ma- a majority of people didn't answer, we're still taking every single answer, and we reviewed it. So if there are, were transportations in the building issues, if there are more recreational needs are met, you know, so we are looking at everything that was written on the survey, and incorporating it. I know, after the last meeting, I had a, I had a phone call with, actually, Councilwoman Sorrell, Debbie Selenardi, had a great conversation with her. Again, I, I meet with Ms. Ivina, the people that are in the buildings every day, trying to pick their brains on, you know, what, what are the needs? Because these are the people that actually have conversations with the residents on a daily basis. So we're trying to maneuver some things with transportation. As far as those computers, I think you might have heard that, that's a grant we're trying to write, to get some computers. But Councilman is correct, you know, with getting the infrastructure and, and the, the wiring and whatnot, and able to offer that kind of service in the building. So we are working with the health department, and trying to get a grant, with our grant writer. Actually, we're trying to get some recreation equipment at the buildings, and that was a little hard to do because of insurance, insurance issues and whatnot. So that didn't quite work out, so I was a little disappointed with that. But I know the health department worked with the recreation and with, with Unico, and now there's a gardening program up at the Toby Cat Center, that's being offered on Thursday afternoons at 1:00 PM. So anything you're interested in, there is, you could call the health department at 325. And this goes to anyone in the public. Because we have some nice events coming up. I'm sorry, nine seven three, three two five, four one zero five. And, and either Patty Duffy or Estrella Bianchi is our senior coordinators. And you just tell them you want to be on the mailing list for events. And they'll get you on the mailing list. If you do have access to a computer, you could give them your email, and you'll be on their e-blast list to remind you of all the events. But in the summer, at the pool, starting June 20th, from 10:30 to 11:30 AM on Wednesdays, there's an eight-week program for swim aerobics, if you're, want to get ambitious with that activity. Again, the senior gardening program, they're working with the Rusters Masters Gardening Program. Their, their plots, their raised plots, so you don't have to bend over and garden their, their raised, which is nice. And that's on Thursdays at 1:00 PM. Next Wednesday, May 30th, our salute to seniors' luncheon at Mayfair Farms is next week. So there's a lot of great opportunities. Please call, call the ladies at that number, and you'll be able to get, you know, flyers mailed home to you. I know they put them out on the bulletin board in your building.
Yes.
So I know they're usually there. And we try to get them in the library and other places in the township. So again, it is a work in progress, but we want to hear if folks, if you're not receiving or, or being notified of these events, and you want to get on the list, please reach, reach out for that. There'll be a great food truck festival, July 1st in town, on a Sunday. So there's a lot of great things coming up, but we want to make sure you get the information for that. And Mr. Keough's actually putting together a program in the summer as OSPAC, which is one of the items in the budget, which is through the decades programs, which will show movies and concerts up at OSPAC this summer. So a lot of great things are coming up, and we're working on. And again, it's a work in progress, but we, you know, we're just going to keep working it, so we get it right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming down. And last but not least, Ms. Malanga, we're going to be speaking, you know, about, that, your request in a little bit, so I'll save my comments for that. But in re- again, I have to echo Councilman Sorillo's comments in regards to West Essex Highlands. We had our attorney, Ms. Shirley Bishop, go there about, what, a year ago, or within the past year, to give a presentation to well over a hundred, maybe two, well over a hundred residents that evening. And I thought she was very thoughtful, she was very thorough. We, we did attend. We weren't told we couldn't attend. We did attend. But she, she was the speaker. She's our attorney. She knows what she could say, and what she can't say. And being elective official for this township for 12 years, I've never, you know, I, I, I won't go speak if we're in litigation. I don't think it's appropriate. So sometimes I'll show up to listen, but that's why we have the experts, our attorneys, go represent us. And I can understand, you know, I don't blame my, I'm not saying this for any other reason, that I'm speaking for myself. You're not going to see me. If we're in litigation, and we have a situation litigation, I have no problem arranging and advocating for Ms. Bishop to go back there, if the residents feel that they'd like to hear Ms. Bishop speak and update them. I would support having her go speak with them, because she should be the person who should be speaking on behalf of, of the council and the township, in regards to updating the residents. So-
Nothing but litigation, that wasn't, I don't think it was.
Well, we are in litigation with, with-
But that wasn't.
Okay, okay. So anyway, but that can be arranged if, if those residents are, have those kind of concerns. And I think that's it. I, I just have to give a shout out to all the parents and children that came this evening. Obviously, they left quickly, because they needed to-
Way past their bedtime.
Way past their bedtime. But I'd be remiss if I just didn't make a comment about this real quick. I know I've been on the phone with my former colleagues in regards to, you know, updates on what they've been doing. Maybe Council President, we could have John Morella, or, or the chief in, or both, to give us a li- little update. I know our police department has been working hand in hand with the school district, in regards to making our school safer. I know there's budget items that the school board put in their school budget. And I say this over and over again, we used to get the video cameras years ago, just to see when kids were, you know, were, were doing something inappropriate down a hallway. And now, we have them probably save lives. And I also am a big proponent for see something, say something. Watching what happened in Florida, and now we'll find out results of what recently happened in Texas, breaks my heart. And knowing all, you know, just knowing our building's layouts, and it just keeps me up at night sometimes, you know, how to keep our, our kids safe, and our, our staff safe. And we have the best here in West Orange, working with our school district. And, but, you know, it also has to come at home, if, if you, you know, if you see a, a child that may be having issues, you know, call, call the school, or call someone. Because it, it, you know, everybody in today's culture is always, in today's world, is afraid to say something, because it might hurt someone's feelings. But sometimes it could also help a life. So if you do it in the right, appropriate way. So, thank, thank you to all of them for coming down, and to remember to wear orange on Friday. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. It's a good suggestion about John Morella, too.
Yeah.
Good.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. I'll try to make this quick. Thank you very much to Ms. Guarino for coming in, speaking about the library's activities with the street fair. I wanted to just mention, and I, I guess, I usually, Councilwoman Castellino beats me to it, but we're, because we're both active with the Friends of the West Orange Public Library. We are going to have a spring book and plant sale, at the same time as the street fair, on June 2nd, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Last year, those of you who tried to get to our book sale last year, found all the roads closed around the municipal building, and it was much more difficult to get there. That's not going to be an issue this, this year. There will be plenty of parking. So, once you go to the street fair, or before you go to the street fair, you might want to stop by the library. We've got more than 10,000 books for sale, very inexpensively, some excellent books. And you can also take a short tour of the refurbished basement, where we're now having the fair, um, excuse me, having the book sale, and also having other events down there. So I, I thank Ms. Guarino for coming and giving me that opening.
Shuttle bus, shuttle bus.
Oh, the shuttle there, S. I knew she should have gone first. We're also going to be benefiting from shuttle buses that'll be moving from the fair back to Town Hall. So you can actually, will have a transportation as well. Ms. Malanga, thank you very much for your, your comments. You, you made the case much more eloquently and better than I can, for why we should keep pushing forward on the Ridge Road property as a potential open space. Ms. Martin, I think you are the star of the evening. So thank you very much for coming. I just, very briefly, I, I was sorry to hear about the difficulties you had in filling out the survey. I had just assumed that in the, in the senior housing, it would be very easy to distribute, either door-to-door, or, or at a meeting or something. So I'm sure if we ever do something like this again, we'll focus much better on it. And you are not the first, and, and probably not the last, to raise issues about the senior transportation. So I appreciate you adding your voice to that. It was identified in the survey that we need to improve transportation. So please, keep us abreast with your personal experience of that, because it's identified as an issue, and we are trying to, we're trying to make it better.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Svetvilius, thanks very much for your comments. As always, very eloquent. And you even got me laughing there a couple of times. You're, you're always doing that, and I'm trying to be serious up here. So, but I, I do appreciate my comments, the comments from my fellow councilmen, from Councilman Sorillo, and Councilwoman Sorillo, um, excuse me, it's a long night, Castellino, I apologize, about, you know, this, this trade-off between our duty to residents, to serve them and keep them informed of issues in town that might or are affecting them. And the need to be prudent and cautious about giving out information that might impact litigation. We see things, I think, a little bit differently. I thought it was important to, to talk to the residents at, at the West Essex Highlands meeting, to give them perhaps a different perspective, well aware that there is litigation going on, and well aware that there is confidential discussions going on, mediation, that both Council President and I are involved in. And wanted to just be careful to keep the two things separate. But it's a highly complex situation with affordable housing, and there is a wealth of public information out there, that we either have personally, or also that's out there. And so that's what I, I spoke about, and even told them about the litigation that's going on. We actually, we as residents do have access to the docket, to find, to keep up with what's going on, because it's a public, the lawsuit actually is a public event, that, that the information is available. And the other thing is, if, you know, I think Mr. Svetvilius referenced the mayor posting something on Facebook that suggested that perhaps I might be jeopardizing things. I figure if the mayor is posting publicly, then it can't be too terrible, the litigation can't be too terrible if the mayor continues to talk about it. Mr. Campagna, thanks very much. You, you made me proud as my appointee, and I look forward to reading your, your summary. And I, I do want to just follow up on that, your reference to the 2009 resolution, because that resolution, which actually created the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, has annual terms that run from September to August of the following year. And we, on the council, are supposed to appoint each individual appointee, and then the mayor's supposed to appoint two per people, including the chair. And I see at least one, maybe two other volunteers, who I've, I understand, are attending the, the, the impromptu advisory committee meetings. And I think they would be greatly helped by us providing more people to that group. But I really appreciate all the volunteers, not even being appointed, attending. And Mr. Pagliisi, thank you, thank you, thank you very much for all of your information. I know I threw this at you at the last minute, and I had some email issues, and it was very informative, so I appreciate it. And you just, whenever things are, are happening with the zoo master plan, or the zoo itself, please feel free to come back and inform us, because it's very informative. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Great. So we do thank Robyn, because they're, Robyn Guarino, for bringing up to date on the library. There's so many activities going there. Sally Malanga, I'm sorry that you felt if I slighted my colleague. I didn't intend to. There were a lot of email exchanges that we couldn't exchange. And so I thought if we put it on the subject of Ridge Road on our agenda as discussion, we would be able to hear from Mr. Kizer, because that's how I think I responded to one of the emails, saying that the discussion kind of ended in a limbo, because Ken was going to find out additional information for us on the site, because it is on a private road. And that is what I expected to be the discussion. And I'm sorry if you felt that it should have been a resolution. We, I expected that to be part of the discussion. What I have found out between last Sunday and now, is that there is a pending agreement on that site, only because I looked at the two, if you're on Prospect Avenue, there are two, one is a 4.47 acre, that's on the market right now for $599,000. The other one, a 31 Ridge Road, is on the 1.5 acres, on the market for $199,000. So when I tried to find out more about that, though that's not part of the 16 acres, where we will be discussing, I did find out that there is a pending agreement for those 16 acres. So we'll still have the discussion this evening about, the discussion is to have the council- The discussion is to have the council, or I guess it's a recommendation to the Open Space Commission to, let me think what it is. It's for the council to approve a resolution to approve an appraisal. What would happen is that if that is approved, the Open Space Commission, using green acres funds, has to approve two, they have to have two appraisals commissioned to move forward if they use green acres funding. I was concerned, you're right, I did not want to pursue purchasing the six acres, has nothing to do about preserving land. It was that particular site, because my concern was that if we're using public funds, it should be open to the public, and I, what I saw was more that there is a historic wall around it that would have to be maintained by the West Orange. It just seemed like it's private property, and it would remain in private hands, on a private road. So that's why I put it on for discussion, so that we could hear more about that. Ms. Martin, thank you very much for coming out this evening, and I'm sorry about the transportation. We did hear about that at our last meeting, and unfortunately, our business administrator is not here. He was going to iron that out, and I sure hope that something is put in place. It's unfortunate that you had to come out to tell us about the transportation issues that did come up. There was confusion, confusion there for the event at Liberty and the high school, so, and I'm, we're very sorry about that, and I'm hoping that that has been ironed out. As far as computers, I was really pleased to hear my council colleague talk about capital improvements at the Rent a House for the computers, because right after that issue came up a few council meetings ago, I immediately called the Board of Education, spoke to the county, and also our township recycling coordinator, that we have mandatory e-recycling ordinances, and that instead of having them either delivered to Cedar Grove, where the county does, if there's a way that we can intercept them. And I reached out to chamber members in that field, that they would refurbish the computers to donate them back to the Rent a House or Degnan House. So that's actually in the works, and we're looking to see how we can get those computers refurbished. So it might just be for Degnan House if their capital improvement is for Rent a. Lauren Svetvila, sorry. I did watch your video. I didn't, I didn't believe that the mayor's remark was threatening, I just thought it was cautionary that we are in litigation, and as Councilman Cirillo said, this application goes far back, 2006. It had been denied at one point for 136 homes. Joe did toe the line, too, about discussing pretty much more about the Supreme Court decision than the application itself, so that was informative for the residents there. But as my colleague said, we did have Shirley Bishop, our expert in the field, discuss affordable housing. Again, we're still in mediation. That we were supposed to have a meeting only a week ago, and that has been, that's to be rescheduled. Anthony, thank you for coming out. This looks like a printed-out email. I appreciate that. If it is, I would like to forward it to our chief financial officers. If, I don't see that copied on here, but if this is an email, I would like to forward it.
I want to just copy your copy.
Perfect. Thank you. I have had a very dedicated appointment to the Budget Advisory Commission, and we have not really had that discussion, and, you know, it really wasn't on our list when we were making our appointments. That should have been there as a reminder for all of us. Mary O. Clemmensen has been a very good advocate.
I'm very hard.
Good, okay, has been my appointment for many, many years, so it's a good resource. Anthony, lots to discuss about Turtleback Zoo and that whole property, courtesy review hearings at the planning board. I imagine that most of the comments that you heard at the master plan meeting was about traffic and signage. We haven't seen the application for this parking deck, so I think that would address a lot of the issues that come up about traffic, if that does come before the planning board. You mentioned about the covert being a question. I submitted a New Jersey American Water grant to clear the fallen debris at the watershed that starts at Orange Reservoir and extends right along the properties, I guess behind Stag Field, St. Cloud Avenue, that goes from Orange Reservoir over to Vincent's Pond at Degnan Park. That is an event, it's an environmental commission event, supposed to be on June 16th. So that's part of clearing that debris from the two watersheds. And communication has been very receptive with the county, just through what I hear recommendations made from the planning board to the county with so many of the courtesy hearings that we have. I think that's it. And yes, we, Councilwoman Castellino reminded us about styrofoam. I just happened to have a little note on the side here about styrofoam, that is, we are looking for an end market for that with, at our recycling center. So there's a lot of things in the works, and we address as many issues as we can through the West Orange Environmental Commission.
Madam Clerk? Consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting May 8, 2018.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I do want to apologize, there were a few late resolutions that were added. You know, it was just timing of the grants, timing of work that had to be done on the remediation work that's being, that's pending. So I apologize for the late additions of those resolutions. Any resolutions? Joe, start on this slide.
The amendment resolution needs to be pulled.
Yes, that'll be on next agenda?
No, I have to read that into the record tonight.
Oh, pull first, oh.
It's her favorite time of year.
Yep, mhm. Any other? No? Councilman?
I'm not pulling anything, but I'd like to just ask a couple of quick questions.
Please.
Sure. I can see Mr. Lepore here enjoying his Tuesday evening in his favorite place. I don't know if you're here to speak on Resolution 138, but if you are, I'll just wait for you to come up. Oh, you're not going to, you're not here?
No, but if so, if you have a budget.
Oh, okay, oh, yes, okay, if you wouldn't mind. Resolution 138-18, it's authorizing a contract with Suburban Consulting for some design, professional work and design work for Lafayette Park, and the improvements there for $12,675. I noted that you got two bidders, which I think is great. I don't like it when you just come up with one. But I wanted to just ask a quick question, because the bid responses, if I read them correctly, are a little bit different, because one entity, one bidder, which had the low qualifying bid, actually added, I think, $1,000 to their bid for something that wasn't even requested in the bid specification. So I'm just trying to understand.
What, I failed in the bid documents to specify, or in the proposal, to specify a specific number of documents for bidding purposes to provide. The low bidder, Suburban Consulting, indicated they would provide six sets of design plan specifications, bid documents, for bidding purposes. This is going to be a publicly bid project. Knowing some of the demand for the work, I indicated that there would probably be a need for more. Tell me how much more another, either 10 sets or 15 sets total would be, and they came back to me with that. I didn't go back to the other bidder, because I knew we're only talking relatively small amounts of money, and I didn't think the other bidder would take several thousand dollars off their bid to come up with some more sets.
Right, okay. And this is just the project to put in a volleyball court at Lafayette Park?
And a footsaw.
And a footsaw.
Footsaw.
And that, I just had that question. Thank you. And then I also had a question, I didn't have a question about the late resolution, but I thought people should know about it. This is Resolution 141-18. It's authorizing an expenditure for an additional $690 to Matrix New World. They are doing the environmental review of Degnan Park and Lafayette Park, and they have found three metals in, or three traces of three metals that they want to do further testing on, and that's what the late resolution was. I just thought I'd throw that out, because it could be more bad news. I'm hoping it won't be, but I just wanted to mention that to people. That's all. I have no resolutions to make.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. The consent agenda is implemented.
There are no ordinances on second and final reading. You getting into position to read your resolution? Okay, well, do you want to finish the ordinances? No? Go.
Want to go to the ordinances?
He's ready to go.
Good evening. I verified today with Division of Local Government Services that, yes, indeed, this is still required to be read into the record. So this evening, we have 2018 Budget Amendment Number One. I expect this to be the only budget amendment. This budget amendment, once it is adopted, will require a hearing at the meeting on the 12th of June. I'm going to read through this. Be resolved, the township council, the township of West Orange, does hereby approve this amendment to the 2018 Introduced Budget. General revenues, miscellaneous revenues, Section F, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services, public and private revenues, offset with appropriations, 2018 from and 2018 to. Municipal Alliance on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, $59,800 to $59,202. Distracted Driver Grant from 0 to 6,600. NJ Royd Grant from 8720 to 17053. County of Essex Delinquency Prevention Grant from 0 to 6,900. Drive sober or get pulled over from 5,500 to 0. Total Section F, special items of general revenues anticipated with prior written consent of the Director of the Local Government Services, public and private revenues, $1,007,241,650 to $1,007,361,5150. Total miscellaneous revenues from $20,629,93570 to $20,645,67070. Total miscellaneous, I just did.
Number five?
Number five, subtotal general revenues, items 1, 2, 3, and 4, $27,119,26053 to $27,134,99553. Amount to be raised by taxation for support of the municipal budget. A local tax for municipal purposes, including reserve for uncollected tax, $54,001,015,33147 to $54,025,33147. Total amount to be raised for taxes for support of the municipal budget, $56,090,48847 Total general revenues, $83,209,749 to $83,235,484. General appropriations, public and private programs, offset by revenues, community stewardship match, 0 to 15,000. West Orange Municipal Alliance, $59,800 to $59,202. Emma Fire Grant from 0 to 2,000. Hazardous Discharge Grant, APRES, from 865,525 to 0. Community of Essex Delinquency Prevention Grant, expansion from 0 to 6,900. Community of Essex Delinquency Prevention Grant from 0 to 18,563. Drunk Driving Enforcement Fund from 16,390 to 10,890. NJPN Grant from 468,2415 to 1500. Body Armor Replacement Fund from 0 to 829348. NJ Royd Match from 0 to 384667. Green Acres from 0 to 45525. NJ Royd Grant from 8720 to 17053. Drive Sober Labor Day from 0 to 5,500. Distracted Driving Grant from 0 to 6,600. Bulletproof Vest Private, I'm sorry, Bulletproof Vest Program Grant from 0 to 10,96767. Total public and private programs, offset by revenue, $1,0735,530 to 9511217. Total operations excluded from caps, $7,258,78796 to $6,473,36963. Details, salary and wage from $69,05493 to $80,65493. Other expense from $7,189,63303 to $6,392,71470. Capital Improvement Fund from $500,000 to $491,15333. Public and private, offset by revenues, New Jersey DOT, miscellaneous streets, from 0 to 820,000. Total capital improvements, excluding from caps, from $500,000 to $1,311,15333. Total capital, I'm sorry, H2. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes, excluded from caps, $15,989,45868 to $16,015,19368. Total general appropriation excluded from caps, $15,989,45868 to $16,015,19368. Subtotal general appropriation, $79,89749 to $79,915,484. Total general appropriation from $83,209,749 to $83,235,484. Public and private, offset by revenue, total, I'm sorry, offset by revenue, $1,0735,530 to 9511217. Total operations excluded from caps, $7,258,78796 to $8,000, I'm sorry, to $6,473,36963. Capital improvements from $500,000 to $1,311,15333. Total general appropriations, $83,209,749 to $83,235,484. A public hearing on the amendment will be held on June 12th at West Orange Town Hall, 66 Main Street, West Orange, New Jersey, 07052, at 7 o'clock in the evening. This resolution shall be published in the West Orange Chronicle Thursday, May 31st, 2018, in full, as notice of the above-mentioned hearing.
Thank you. Did that without glasses. I saw your eyes were.
Impressive.
So just a quick question. You sent us, I think, the first version of this, like, at 8 o'clock last night, but then what we got here in writing is different?
No, from what you had last night, the only, there, yes, I'm sorry, there is, we got some feedback back from the Division of Local Government Services. There were a couple of, two grants where we were anticipating the match out of OE, and they took issue with that and made us actually appropriate it in the grant itself. So we made those two changes.
Okay. So what you went over, what we got in writing, that's the form going forward, because it looked like there were difference, there were differences, other differences between the two than just two line items.
Well, two line items turns into a few lines, because with the subtotal change and things of that nature, so, plus you have, you have changes on both sides. You have changes on the revenue side and changes on the appropriations side. So the net effect of this is there were two items that caused the change, and wherever that ripple effect occurs are the differences.
Okay. So the bottom line is that the budget increased by $23,735?
Yes.
Without changing the tax levy?
Tax levy is still 2%.
Okay, okay, thank you. I was going to ask some questions about these, but maybe we can just save it till the next, next meeting, when we're going to be talking numbers.
The bottom line to these is basically, when we introduce, all these are, all of these, with one exception, I guess, is, well, actually, they're all based on grants, and when we do introduction, we put placeholders in, just, you know, because we don't really know at that point in time where the grants are, and once they start to fold out at introduction, or, I'm sorry, at adoption. And once they start to fold out at introduction, or I'm sorry, at adoption, we'll do amongst what other changes may be, we'll make the changes necessary to reflect like grants. So everything here is grant-driven. There's nothing else that within the budget itself, anything that you approved, it's not driven by any of the, any changes in those.
Okay.
So, Jonathan, so what you're saying with the two grants is that, yes, there was a placeholder, but if, that they were approved and now there's a match.
There's a match.
Right.
And we were, we were anticipating doing the match.
That's what changes.
A little differently. And again, they took issue with it. And while I feel confident in our interpretation of it, it's not worth getting into a tussle over.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 135-18 first?
Some of.
Second. Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. All right. So there are no ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance is on first reading. We have ordinance 2543-18. This is an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Section 32, 32.1, 32.3, 32.7, 32.8, 32.9, 32.10, 32.11, and 32.12 of the police towing and storage services. This ordinance is drafted to revise municipal code provisions governing the towing of vehicles by licensed tow companies. The municipal code previously prohibited towing companies from charging towing and storage fees for vehicles towed as part of a criminal investigation. This ordinances would limit that prohibition to vehicles registered to township residents. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some of.
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Any questions?
You said it very well.
Ordinance 2544-18 is a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the township appropriating $9,644,148, authorizing the issuance of $9,184,902.86 in bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Any comments or questions on that?
So question, yeah, I have a question. So if an item, because I guess it's just a total dollar amount, like, for example, there's an item or two that's in here we don't agree with, it could be taken up when, if it's presented to us at a further, further date to move the item?
The ordinance itself is all or none.
Yeah.
So you can't, you cannot, you cannot pick and choose with it. When you go to adopt, you either adopt or you don't. You can adopt and, you can not adopt and redline and then reintroduce and, you know, you can go through that process.
Now, I haven't looked at my email today, but I know Mr. Keough probably sent to you the amount of usage we use for Soriano Field because it is quite extensive up there. That's why we're splitting the cost, all of the regular cost programs, the PALS there on Sundays, all their practices. So they're up there, right, as soon as the high school's done, we're up there.
Yeah, I mean, our views, we probably use it more than the Board of Ed does.
Yeah.
Especially when you include, especially when you include passive, the passive recreation.
Yeah. And then the residents in the neighborhood actually walk the track and that's open to them any hours other than when there's a track meet.
It's one of the few places you can go and get a pickup game.
So, yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, but I think it's important if you send that, that information to, to us that Mr. Keough wrote up, it's good for them to, I'd like them to have. All right. I guess.
Council Miss Rill? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Well, is Mr., come, has Mr. Lepore come up yet? Or I'll wait for anybody else has any other questions. I just wanted to pick his brain with the firehouses and what his plans are for this coming year.
Thanks, Lynn.
The, the plan at, at the firehouses are predominantly to look at the building envelope at three of the firehouses. That's Firehouse Three on Ridgeway Avenue, Firehouse Four on Pleasant Valley Way, and the most recently numbered Firehouse Number Five on Mount Pleasant Place. All these are in need of new roofs. They also need, predominantly also, Three and Four need a lot of work on their brickwork to point up the brickwork, just to make sure the exterior of the building is sealed. We also have some infiltration of water at Number Five Firehouse, which we want to address. So we want to make sure the building envelope is tight before we start doing a lot of interior work. We are also then, from there, going to look at the bathrooms and upgrading the bathrooms at Number Three and Number, Number Four. We have plus or minus 600,000 to do this work. About half of it will be the cost of the new roofs.
Question?
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, did you not, obviously, there's so many hours in a day and the time you get your projects done, was this, I know you had a whole study done, but were the, were these all the projects you felt that could be done this year? Or if you had additional money, can, is there time allotted to do additional projects?
I think, given the monies available, this is, this is how we're, we're moving forward. Obviously, I mentioned three of the firehouses. I did not mention fire headquarters, which, again, on, on their dormitory and living side needs substantial work done. But what did want to focus on is our, our two oldest firehouses. Not to say that the oldest is at Number Five, but 20-plus years ago, that was completely gut, rehabbed, and renovated. We want to keep, try to keep ahead of some of the problems that could arise there if we don't replace the roof, which is now just over 21 years, and address some of the water penetration. So we're looking at the two oldest, Number Three and Four, and trying to keep Five from, which is our newest, from slipping and having some problems with the water penetration.
And what's life on the roofs of headquarters and the other two firehouses?
They would need to be replaced also.
So you're scheduling them out or if you have the money, would you do it?
At this point, given the money, that got, not planning on those just simply because of the lack of funding.
And did you put together, I know you did a study, but I also know you were mapping out the projects. Are you mapping them out over a course of three years, five years? How were you mapping this?
Probably over a three-year period or not even a little sooner. Our, our needs assessment did put costs associated with the various improvements at, at the firehouses. I think the total was a little bit in excess of $2 million.
Yeah. Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Lepore. My colleagues asked some questions.
Council Miss Rill, did you have a question about the firehouse?
Yeah.
Or not necessarily the firehouse, but for Lenny?
Well, number one, I just want to thank the Council President. I wanted to piggyback off the question with respect to the process. And just to clarify, so we will be approving the allocation of, the issuance of the bonds. In an individually, each project will see, see its consideration at the council.
Yeah, and certainly every major project.
So will be, will see an opportunity for us to consider whether or not township, what is the period that we have given ourselves to, should this ordinance be, go through or be approved? What kind of timeframe are we talking about? Or the capital?
If it's, if it is approved on the 12th of June, funds will be available on July 4th to the 5th.
There you go.
And that's what, that's, that's the time, that's the timeframe that we're, we're counting on in terms of doing the Soriano Field improvements for this year.
Subsequent to that, what's the timeline that you were working with as it relates to addressing most of the capital needs that?
Moving forward?
Yeah.
Generally, you know, generally, your capital ordinance takes about a year to spend out, plus or minus, you know, on average. Some things, some things won't get spent within that year and things that were left over from a previous one will. So, but on average, in terms of dollars, it's usually about the amount. It usually just takes about a year.
Okay.
Some things faster, for instance, I mean, and also it's timing, you know, obviously, we're going to move very fast on the Soriano Field. We're going to try to move as fast as we can on streets and roads just because we have to try to get in before the change in weather. Other things, therefore, may get left until later on that are less, less sensitive to weather. So it's, it's, you know, it is about our ability to get this job done. And we've now been pretty good about, you know, spending out, you know, on an annual basis.
Well, roofs, excuse me, roofs should be, should be on the weather list, right? Roof, right?
Well, roof, roofs, Lenny can speak to it more fluently than I can, but certainly, you, you don't have to worry about digging into the ground to do roofs. So you, depending on what the weather is and when it gets cold, up to a certain point, if it gets too cold, you can't because you can't, you can't do the, make the application of the roof materials. You know, that's, that's going to be driven by how quickly are the engineers get back and the architects get back with, with the plants because you've already authorized those.
Right. And I was thinking that it's already underway so the, you know, we can have the preliminary specifications for bidding purposes ready as soon as possible before, before the weather breaks. Now, what about the interest rates? Do they kick in right away? Do we have to pay interest on the money right away or on a, as we?
It's, it's all fungible, but as, we're going to, we're going to require borrowing this year. So there, there will be probably up to a $10 million note sale sometime during the year. Maybe, maybe, you know, maybe, may not be all at once, but it may be, you know, split up.
Right. So the interest payments begin right away?
No, they, the interest payments will follow in 2019.
Okay. All right. The other question I had was, I mean, it may be here perhaps in language, the relocation of the DPW garage, is that, are we expecting any capital expenses associated with that? Would that be a separately addressed issue?
We, well, depend, that kind of depends on the cash flow, but at some point in time, yes, there will be, you know, it may or may not be funded depending on how the, the sale of, of, or how that, how, sorry, redevelopment Phase Two moves along. Because at some point in time, we're going to get cash from them. But we will probably have to fund upfront and then repay it with, with the funding that comes from the redevelopment. Because we have to get out.
I talked about a lot of money to build a new DPW garage.
We are talking about, we're talking about a lot of money. Having said that, there's about nine million, above and beyond everything else, it's about $9 million coming back to us, of the project to pay for that. So I, no doubt, no doubt in my mind that we will be able to afford to.
Does that include the three and a half that's being repaid from the, from Phase One?
No, 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 this is, this is separate. This is, this is a combination of, of relocation funds, the sale of DPW, and I'm, I'm not even counting reimbursement for mitigation, environmental mitigation that we've, that we've already done, which we will get back. So, so there's, there's no doubt in our minds that there will be sufficient funds to fund the relocation of DPW. We may have to front some money before that comes in, that's all.
Okay. And the last question, the, going back to the three and a half million dollars coming back from prison for Phase One, is that going to be reinvested back into capital improvements?
The three, no, the money that comes back is three, 315, 3150.
Sorry.
And that will go to pay down the notes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President? Mr. Gross, you know, has, 2017 capital projects are being completed, has, are running to the end. Do you forecast any reserves left? Like any projects coming under?
Back in 2013, I did a $5 million reallocation because we, we couldn't afford to, to, one reason was we couldn't, we couldn't afford to put up the down payment money. So we went back and looked at it. We have nowhere near that. We could not do that now. I mean, there, is there, is there any? There always is because there's, there's a certain rolling effect. But it's minimal. If you, if you look at night, you look, see how much, you know, in terms of projects that we've done, most of them have been, were pretty spot-on or, you know, there's, sometimes there's 15, $20,000 left on a, a $500,000 appropriation.
What I'm trying to understand too, and trying to get a grasp on is like, you know, Mr. Lepore's presentation, though, that what he has to do just for the firehouses, I believe is insignificant. It's not sufficient to do the projects that really need to do to put those buildings in proper order and to prevent additional erosion, deterioration of the structures. I'm trying to get an idea, is anything rolling forward out of 2017 that we could roll over into 2018?
The, the, there's very, very little that would, would assist with that because you ought, you have to, not only do you have to match up the, the dollars, you have to match up the useful light. So you really, that's going to be difficult to do that. Having said that, if, if the council decides that it wants, say, you know, we, you believe that you should be, you're putting additional monies aside for, for this project, you can do that. I mean, we have some extra money in the Capital Improvement Fund to pay for the down payment, so that's a choice you could make.
Okay. And, and, and thank you, Mr. Gross. And with project management, what I'm thinking of, all right, so for 2018, once we approve, we approve the budget going forward and as the projects are rolling forward, you know, are, are the, the analysis in place to say, okay, this project's going to come under so many thousands of dollars and everything else, can that be reallocated to any other project that, say, Mr. Lepore needs to adjust, particularly the fire department?
Well, again, if, you can't do it till after the projects are done because you don't know what.
Sure.
You know, you might have an idea, but you really, you don't, you can't until you do that. I mean, if, if you charged us with saying, come up with a way to raise X number of dollars, we'd go back and look and see what we could do. That's, you know, you have to decide. The first question is, do you want to allocate more dollars to this?
Well, you know, we, you'd like, I mean, you'd like to have the project done properly and you'd like to have it done to the best it can be. All I'm saying is that, is there in place the analysis to understand, say, as the projects are rolling, you know, true project management? As the projects are rolling forward, okay, say, street improvement, you know, and, and Mr. Lepore has pulled this many times and been able to get projects to come in under, under, you know, the project expense. So I'm just trying to get an idea, as these projects are rolling forward, particularly, and not just putting it on street improvement or that, I'm just asking, are the, is the analysis in place that?
That's a, that's a good example. Right now, there's about $300,000 left from last year of street improvement. Having said that, that doesn't mean that it's not earmarked.
No, I know, no, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, things are not even.
Or, or, or that there's not going to be something that comes up that the council is going to say, you know, we really wish we could, you know, we didn't plan on that, but we would really like to address it. We'd like, we'd like to have quote-unquote some reserves of that nature so that when those projects come up, we can address them as opposed to tell the public, oh gee, we can't do that. So, I mean, I think that's where we are. So the answer to you, I mean, we, we manage, that, that's how we manage. So I, like I said, if, I think it's, if you want to go beyond So I, like I said, if, I think it's, if you want to go beyond what was recommended by the mayor, then certainly the council has the ability to do it.
No, I would, look, we don't want to put any additional expense and debt on the residence or, I'm just trying, the idea, like we do, is that we rolling forecast our capital projects, and then we know at a certain point in time, we have X amount of dollars left over, then we automatically, if management says, okay, we want to do this, or we need more money to take care of this project, we can do it. And that's all I'm asking, is, is the, you know, processes in place?
We believe there are, I mean, we've, we've made these recommendations to you after evaluating what our current, you know, our current reserves are, and believe that this is, these are additional funds that we require.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Council President.
Just really quick, two things. I notice you were saying there isn't a whole lot of leftovers or slippage, however you refer to them, but didn't we, when we, the council majority approved the skate park, wasn't, that we didn't actually issue a separate bond ordinance for that? We just paid $200,000 from the capital leftovers, weren't we?
That's right, and the council, if you came to a project meeting today and said, I got, I need $200,000, we'd find it, you know, but, but that's not, I don't think that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about, you know, does, I get the sense, we're talking about, we have $600,000, we probably need another $2 million on top of that to do the whole thing. Now, what, you know, what, and again, I've asked, what's the council's idea on this? If you're looking for, do another million dollars, I'm not going to find that. You know, if it's $200,000, yeah, I'll find that.
Right, but, and then the second thing is, we don't necessarily have to add to the proposed capital budget, we can reallocate among what we suggested, correct? Like, for example, if we hate children and we don't want to use the ICE, ICE capate thing, we could take that $110,000 and move it over to, to the firemen, because I think, the councilwoman and I, we're over at the headquarters two years ago, and they got a quick tour of the showers there, and I can't believe we're forcing grown people to use those showers the way they were two years ago, and I, I can't imagine they've even gotten worse. So, anyway, we can reallocate if that's what we want to do.
This is miniscule compared to what we're discussing in this ordinance here, but I have to make this comment, that on Sunday, Boy Scout Troop Two advanced two scouts to the rank of Eagle, and I am an Eagle, a mother, as a mother of an Eagle, I even invited to all of these events for many, many years. And the Scouts project, one of the Eagle Scout project, was to do improvements at headquarters at the daily operations room. And, and I speak at all of these Eagle award ceremonies, Court of Honors, and I never addressed a project as a capital improvement project, and that's what it turned out to be. So, you know, we were wondering if they knew tile work and other kinds of things, they're looking at Eagle projects now in a different light, so I just, it was interesting. Never looked at Eagle projects that way. Could be.
Matters pending?
Well, matters pending, okay, so matters pending, yeah, we already voted on that discussion.
Right.
So Matters Pending is 16 acres on the corner of Prospect Avenue and Mount Pleasant Avenue. This is on a private road, this, pardon, this was discussed at an open space meeting, I don't know, Joe, if you have dates from that, I don't recall what the dates were. It did come before the council, we, it became a discussion, like I said, it became, it was in a limbo because we weren't sure what we could do with green acre funds on a private road. So, that being said, I'm going to ask Ken to what you found out with the research that you found, because not everyone had that information.
I don't know the issue was green acres funds, it was open space trust funds, I think there's a difference.
Okay, well, opens, I'm sorry, all right, so I'm saying, open space trust funds, right, but it's taxpayer dollars going toward public use.
If green acres funds are used, the property has to be open to the whole state, so.
Right, I misspoke, I meant green, I meant open space.
At the time it came up, I wasn't sure whether you could do it or not, whether you could purchase public space for open space use on a private road. Mr. Sayers seemed to feel pretty certain that you couldn't, so, you know, we thought we should research it. We did research it over a period of time. At the end of my research, I didn't find anything that would absolutely prohibit it. I called the DEP and spoke with Kathy Elliott Shaw, who I have known from prior dealings, and she is a supervisor in that agency, and supervises the purchase, I believe, of green acres property, and asked her if there was any prohibition she knew of, and she didn't, but she said that you'd better get public access easements from everybody who lives on that street before you do it.
Right.
Right, so I don't, I don't see this as being a legal issue, it's a public policy issue.
Right. So I guess my point, because that was just addressed publicly, that I was not in favor of purchasing this property, because it would be open space funds, and as we just saw on the budget, that is part of taxpayer dollars, and I felt that on a public road, it really wouldn't be open to the public, so that there would be no public use for this, and if, take, the property then comes off of the tax revenue, and that I felt that that wall, the historic wall, would become the township's responsibility, just thinking ahead if we did purchase that site. And I know when there was a damage done to the wall on Ridgeway, when that perch, that property was purchased, it was, I, I don't know, Len, you would know, I think it was something like $80,000 to repair, and that's a much smaller wall on Ridgeway. So, you know, that was on my mind.
It's much smaller, but I don't think they were constructed the same way. I think the one on Mount Pleasant is certainly more substantial and a better quality.
Oh, absolutely, right, that's, right. So that was just my response at that point. Like I said, it became a discussion because we were waiting to hear back, we didn't make any motion, we didn't even table it at that point, it was just really to find in, find out more information. Councilman Thurl?
Thank you, Council President. My question is about the, on that comment and explanation, what I'm unclear, right, at this point is whether we would need the approval of the neighboring residents to do us an appraisal at this stage, or does that come later on? Should the, a governing body consider the purchase of the property?
I don't know that you would need the permission of the residents to do an appraisal at this point, but I, I think, look, I mean, I'm a lawyer and I'm, this isn't legal advice, because it's, as I said, I don't see this as being a legal issue. To me, you have to look at this logically. The property's on a private road, and appraisals cost money. Somebody said you may need to get two appraisals, if I, and I don't, I'm not familiar with the open space, you know, process, so to speak, but seems to me, the first question is, is this property that you want to buy for preservation of open space? And if it is, then you might want to get an appraisal to see how feasible it is. If you're not going to do it for other reasons, then why spend the money for the appraisal? And that's just, to me, that's just common sense, but, I mean, there's lots of practical problems, I think, with this property, but I don't know that they're insurmountable, that they're just problems, so you have to, it's up for you guys to decide what you want to do.
Councilman, I guess the other point I wanted to make was that we just spent all this time on the budget and bonding and nine million dollar bond here with this ordinance pending. The Open Space Commission doesn't have this amount of money, so this would have to be bonded if, in fact, we were to move forward purchasing this.
I guess, Council President, I'm trying to just raise one other thing, and I, it just, I recall at some point seeing a West Orange map with an overlay of open space, there was an inventory done at some point, I believe, the Open Space Committee may have done that. So I don't, it seems to me, the other thing that all you have to consider is all of the open space in town, and what's available and what makes the most sense to spend money on, and I don't know the answer to that, but I do remember seeing that map at some point.
It is, it's in the master plan, and they're in, they're supposed to be in the process of updating that, too.
Didn't you say?
But that's private road, though, it's still a private road, so it's not, it's not in their open space inventory, because it's on a private road, because we don't own it. Their inventory.
Okay, I don't know if it was only public open space, or if it was all open space, I mean, I didn't, I don't know what that map or that overlay showed, and maybe there's, maybe there's two, maybe there's one that shows public and one that shows private, I don't know.
Councilman, did you?
Council President, I'm sorry, didn't you mention before, I'm trying to, unless I misunderstood, I apologize, that somebody already has an interest on the property?
Yes, they.
So that would defeat the purpose of?
That it's really not for sale, because there's a pending agreement.
Okay, I just like to know, I mean.
As we speak.
So somebody is interested in the property?
Yes, could you tell us more about that? Because, because this is the first I've heard.
I found out today, because I called about the other two lots when I saw the signs that are on Prospect Avenue. Well, I found out about the, only because I called, there were two signs on Prospect Avenue, and that's when I called.
So you called the Realtor?
I called the Realtor, and that's, that's what I was told, that there's a pending agreement. But those two lots are not part of the 16 acres.
That's correct. Those signs have been up for sale on Prospect Avenue for months, and they are not.
But my question was about the 16 acres.
Yeah, but, but that has absolutely nothing to do with the property that we're talking about now, for, that's the potential for the open space. So I just wanted to clarify.
That's why I called that person.
Right, that's fine. So, but what you're, you're saying is, just to clarify, what you heard has absolutely nothing to do with the property that we are looking at?
No, oh, no, that started the conversation, the reason why I called was because they were already involved in the 16 acres, so that's why I asked him about that, and told me that there was a pending agreement.
With the 16?
With the 16 acres, not the, yes.
We're talking about getting appraisal on, there's a pending agreement for someone to purchase that property already?
Yes.
Interesting.
Because there was already an application before the zoning board, and then they withdrew, so there has been activity up there.
Well, the person that owns it was the person that submitted that application, and then they withdrew it.
Right, and I went to the Realtor.
This is, this is news to me, because, because the Open Space Commission was told that they had a direct conversation with the owner of the property, who said that he would be very interested in selling it as open space.
And that was as of today, pending agreement.
So we've got to get more information about that, we've got to confirm that, just because a Realtor told you that.
Well, exactly, but that's all they told me.
That's why I wanted to ask the question, I was listening, so, okay. So we need more information.
Okay.
Okay.
So, question.
What's the question?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Well, no, I was going to say, the next step is, somebody has to be responsible for obtaining whatever the agreement or confirming what's, what's going on there, because there certainly is not a sign for sale on that, on the property that we're talking about, the open space, that's, that's not a sign there. The signs you're seeing are on the other side of Ridge Road.
I was specific about the 16 acres.
Yeah, I don't think it's 16, but, so maybe there was some confusion. I think the property that we're looking at is, is a little bit smaller than that.
All right. That's all I, that's all I have, that's all I was.
Yeah, no, but the next step is, we've got to follow that up to find out exactly what's going on. I don't know if that's, requires us to have Mr. Kizer do it, or whether one of us can, but we should, we should confirm that.
I can certainly follow up, although I'm going to be away for the next week, so it's not going to happen until, after I get back, but the next meeting's not until the 12th anyway, and I'm not sure how, this is not a, I don't think it's a serious time situation, but I can try to find out.
Only for the purposes of us considering an appraisal, and we're still at that, at that step. And I wouldn't want to, I don't know if you would compromise yourself by doing more research if that property's up before one of the boards.
It's not.
Okay.
No, that's okay, I just have two questions for Mr. Gross, because if it's not in a pending transaction, and we are going to continue discussion on it for next meeting, I guess my question is, right now, those 16 or whatever the acreage is, how much are we, what's the tax assessment on it, what are we receiving in tax revenue on the property currently?
I don't know.
No, that's, I mean, for next meeting, if I could have that information, if we continue this discussion. Also, Mr. Kizer, I, you know, again, you know, we take title to the property, I do agree with the public access easements, if we're going to use it for public use, obviously, if we, if, if you were to buy it as an owner, and we would only have, you know, there would probably be existing easement to the private road, but if we're going to use it for public access, then we need to investigate that a little further.
So you have to buy that. You have to buy the easements.
No, I.
You, wherever you, wherever you, you know, wherever you anticipate having access, you'll have to negotiate easements, either on the road or private property.
Yeah, but, but the way that road is set up, this property is right at the front of the road, so the access, the pivotal access is right, the primary access, well, the only access to the, to that, to all those homes, is from that, from that main entrance where the property sits, right on that main entrance.
Is there parking there?
Not currently, no.
Look, I mean, look, there's, there's a lot of issues here, and you've only scratched the surface, I think, but, I mean, a lot of that land, I believe, or at least some of that land, I don't, I don't want to say a lot, I don't know how many acres are undeveloped, but some of that's on steep slope.
Yeah.
I, I recall being on the, what used to be the Millia Estate, where there's several houses now, I can't remember what the issue was, but I think it was because somebody who owned the land on Ridge Road had taken down a lot of trees, that upset a lot of people, and caused potential erosion to the properties down below. And I think that may have been before the steep slope ordinance was created or changed, it's been quite a while now, but I remember that was an issue at some point in the last 20 years that I've been doing this. And I don't know how much of it is undeveloped, but I believe there is some of it that's on steep enough slope that you can't build there.
Then that's another question, again, you know, appraisal is the value of the property, but, you know, I don't know if we could ask as an appraisal, in the appraisal, as, well, I guess you could, if it's, the value is on, buildable, like what is actually buildable, because I know the concern here is the conservation of the habitat, and if some of the habitat isn't, isn't buildable and would have to remain, you know, that's part of our decision whether to purchase it or not, because if you can build on certain parts of it and, and not take trees down, why?
Well, there's also, there's also a question about what you're going to do with the property, I mean, it's just going to be completely passive use, where it just remains, you know, open space, treeed property, or is something going to be put there? I, I don't know, you know, you guys have to decide what the intent is, what you're going to do with it. It, you know, you could buy that property and do, do different things with it, so you can make a park, you could just leave it as it is.
Well, would be, we'd be limited to with the, would there be, I guess we have to see what the D looks like, if there's any D restrictions, it's on private property, so.
No, it won't be private property anymore.
Exactly.
It won't be private.
No, 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 but it's on a private road, so you have to get the easements.
Well, again, that goes back to the access, you're going to have to buy access, or, you know, to, I shouldn't say you're going to have to.
How do you praise that?
If you, you've got to negotiate, or, or take, or, you know, whatever process you decided to use, I don't think there's, there's an appetite to do any condemnation, so you're going to have to negotiate with wherever you determine that access needs to be, with the property owner, to see whether or not, whether they, A, willing to give you the access, and B, what they want to, compensation for that access. And the other question that comes up is, I mean, what, what did the, I know the Open Space Committee voted to come before the council and ask for the appraisal, and I recall, I think, somebody from that body came before the council and made a specific request, I don't remember, it was just a letter or it was an appearance, but, I mean, how much of this work has been done already by the Open Space Committee? I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm the council liaison, we've discussed it many times, but we've discussed it as a, as a passive resource. You know, we've got all kinds of different types of open space here in town, we've got, you know, we've got places that are much more built up as, as open space, and then we've got totally. and then we've got totally, you know, au naturel. We've got plenty of places with no parking. I mean, I'm just thinking Ridgway, you know, Ridgway Avenue, the Ridgway Park over there has no onsite parking. People just park on the street.
But it became a usable park. Ridgway Park became a usable park.
Yes, but we've got plenty of open space here in town where there's been no improvements and there's no parking.
But, but I guess my, my question is, and I really don't know, you know, how much of these things that we're talking about were examined, studied by the Open Space Committee before they took that vote? I mean...
Yeah, we, we didn't look at, we didn't look at the legal issues, if that's what you're asking.
Well, no, not the legal issues so much, but, but, you know, how much of that land is develop, you know, the land use aspect of it.
Yeah, substantially, a lot of that land is not buildable, but I don't know what the numbers are. I don't think we've, we've gotten any sort of survey or, or appraisal on that, but...
I'm, I'm not convinced that you couldn't use open space funds to procure a parcel that you didn't have, that the public didn't have access to in order to prevent development. I'm not sure that, I, I, I think you probably could do that, but you'd have to decide, in order to do that, the first thing you'd have to do is obviously determine whether or not it was developable or what portions were, so that you, you put that into your, into your equation. But if you're going to have public access, and you have to have some access, because it's your property, you've got to be able to get in and maintain it. So, if there's ever an emergency or just, just a basic maintenance of the property, you've got to be able to get in there. So, you have to make sure that you have that.
I think we need to wait and see if the land is, so, we need to keep talking, if the land is available or not available.
Well, I think the most obvious thing is, this is a complicated issue. There's a lot to think about, consider, so you guys can do whatever you want in that respect. I think we need to wait and see.
Find out more information, yeah.
Well, that's, that's fine, but I, I do want to request that the, that the request for the appraisal be put on the agenda and not for further discussion, and if you're not going to do that, please let me know, because I specifically asked to have the, the resolution on the agenda, and when the agenda came back, it wasn't on the agenda, it was on as, as some discussion, and I didn't, I didn't hear back from you. You didn't tell me that you were going to do something with it.
And I mean, my, my view has pretty consistently been that the council president, while you supervise the preparation of the agenda, which is prepared by the clerk, you don't have veto power, and the clerk doesn't have veto power, you know? It's, it's like, so, we, we have a democracy here, and you guys have to decide by a vote whether you want this on the agenda or not. And I don't have a problem either way, but it's up to you to decide whether you want to have a formal vote on the appraisal next meeting, or the meeting after, or some other time, I don't know. It's up to you.
A lot of questions were just raised about with the tax revenue. What is the tax revenue right now? To John's point, we are talking about, yes, purchasing, we'd have to bond to purchase if we did move forward, we have to pay for the appraisal, and then all the considerations. We're not saying that we can't purchase it, we could. Do we want to move forward with that and just preserve it?
And, and by the way, I don't mean to imply or to, or to state that you have to take a formal vote. I mean, Councilman Kukoviac, if there was a general consensus here that this should go on the agenda, that'd be okay. I mean, I don't think there...
I think there are too many unanswered questions yet for that to even...
Well, again, that's not for me to say...
Well, then, we could just put the resolution...
All I'm saying is that I don't, I don't necessarily think you, it would be required that you take a formal vote if it's obvious that everybody wants it on the agenda. If there's a dispute about it, then you should vote.
Mm-hmm.
Majority rules.
Well, I want to ask you about that, Ken, because, Mr. Kizer, because 99% of the legislation that is offered on the agenda doesn't undergo that, that discussion. It comes from the administration, it goes right on the agenda.
That's right, and that's because the mayor is the policy initiator in the, in this form of government, by, by statute.
Right, but, but the, our charter does allow the, the council to also provide, I mean, they're the legislative body.
It does, I agree. It's just that to, to get it there, to put it on the agenda, it should be by a, nobody should be able to put something on the agenda or take something off the agenda without a majority saying it's okay. Because if you, if you, if you have that situation, then one council person has more power than anybody else. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Right, but instead of, instead of making, to have a consensus about whether to have something on the agenda, when a legislator or someone from the legislative branch does it, why don't you just put it on there and people can, I mean, plenty of times I've put legislation on there and nobody seconds it. And, you know, it's a 30-second exercise, but that's at least, you know, I get what I want to do with my legislation. I understand what you're saying, I, I, you know, the consensus, does it come before you see the legislation, or once it's on the agenda, and then people say no?
I, I think when it's, when it's a council person offering something to go on the agenda, I think the place to vet it is, is in the pending matters, new matters discussion, and then either it goes on or it doesn't. I think if, if you have multiple council members putting stuff on the agenda, you know, and then talking, it just doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It's waste time, it takes more time, it doesn't make sense as a practice.
Well, thank you, but that's really why I put it on as a discussion, because had it been a resolution right now and all of these questions were raised, I don't think that it would move forward, because there's still too many unanswered questions. It would still have been left unresolved, and then we would have tabled it and come back for more information, so...
That, that is true, but if you think back to last year, we just put it on the agenda, and it was, the issues were raised and we didn't vote on it. And there's nothing wrong with that.
And we could have done the same.
But if there weren't, but if there weren't issues raised, we could have voted on it. I mean, my understanding of what we've talked about today is that if, if the owner of the property is going to sell it, we'll be able to determine that by, before the next meeting. We can come to the next meeting and settle some of those issues about, I mean, it's really easy to get the, the tax revenue from that, but that's always going to be a concern when, when we, when we move property from, from the tax rolls onto the non-bank tax rolls, that's always going to be an issue. And, and it, I'm, I'm sure it might inform your vote, or it might, it might inform all of our votes, so it's a good piece of information to have, but that's something you can get in about 30 seconds. But the issue, if, if I understand it correctly, is that the, the main issue now to prevent us from getting an appraisal is whether the property owner has a contract to sell the property. If he has that, you know, I can understand, let's not waste any money if we do that.
That's what I'm saying, let's wait and see, and then...
But we'll know that at the, I'm sorry, I interrupted, I apologize.
No, 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 you're right, Councilman, no, no, I took your force, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just going to say, so by the time of the next meeting, the resolution could be on the agenda.
Okay.
And we should be able to find out whether there is a, a existing valid sales contract. If there is, then...
There we go.
Then we may have waited too long.
Okay.
So, what are, so, are we going to put this on pending matters? So, I guess you're saying, just to go straight, straight for a vote next time? I mean, I would need all these other questions answered, because I, and I, I've talked to Sally, she, you know, she gave me a heads up on this over the weekend, and, you know, and I, you know, this, you know, it, for me, the decision, you know, of course, I want to preserve land, but, you know, dollar-wise, does it make sense? The concept of open space doesn't make sense. I, I would like to see the other projects we've done, being the, I shouldn't say I'm no longer a freshman up here, but, you know, just the other, I wasn't around for a lot of the other purchases, just to see what's...
We can get a copy of the open space inventory.
Get a copy of that, so there's a lot more information I need, whether I'll be ready to make a decision at the next meeting. I, I don't know right now.
But another thing is that...
If I don't mind discussing, I think we should definitely should discuss it next meeting. I wouldn't prolong the discussion.
The other thing is that the appraisal is going to tell us a lot about what the price range is going to be for the property. And if a lot of it isn't buildable, if it's on steep slopes, and I, I'm sure that at least part of it is, because I've walked the, I've walked the property, it's not going to be as much as perhaps people are thinking, because we've got a ton of money in the open space, the town open space fund. I don't know what the number is, but I'm just going to say somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000. So, that may be sufficient, or maybe by the time this, we get around to doing this, we'll have even more in there. Mr. Gross, did I, did I cite that number correctly?
Yeah, yeah, you know, the, the other side of that coordinate, of course, is if it, if it comes in really, really, no, is that the number the property owner is interested in, and then you have to decide whether you're going to negotiate this or whether you're going to, you know, take, you know...
Right, but we won't know until we take that first step to get the appraisal, right?
Well, you, you would know, the, the very first decision is, do, do you have, do you have a desire to acquire the property? That's your first decision.
Right.
You know, because if you don't, you know, then you don't, but if you do, then the next steps is, okay, well, what could it be a cost? So, you have to really have to decide. First thing you desire is, you know, what's your desire? Does anyone have a lot and block numbers for this property? Do we have?
You know what I was just about to say?
It's in the, it's in the resolution, I'm sorry.
I just looked them up, and there's so many blocks and lots under, under that entity name that we, that's some more homework that we need to do. I just counted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different sub, lot, what do you call them, block and lots, under that particular owner's name.
Well, well, Councilman Kukoviac indicated that the resolution that would, do we have a copy of that resolution? Do we have a number for it, or?
Yeah, I can, I can email it to you.
It was in September of 2017, I think, when it was put on, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it's, it's two lots. It's two lots, my, my computer batteries died, I can send it to you in the morning.
Yeah, if somebody can send me a copy of the resolution, I'd like, they'll help me.
Okay, so Feden, if you do find...
Once you go into Ridge Road...
On the east side, on the east side of Ridge Road.
Right, okay.
It was 2017 September.
We think so. This is Ridge Road resolution for that. If you can find it, you could send it to us.
My computer died.
Mm-hmm.
I may even have it on there. If I do, I'll, I'll find it tonight or proceed.
Councilwoman Kesselina?
So, I guess I have a question, miss, maybe Mr. Lepore can answer this, because he's sitting right here, so, I, I know you're aware of the...
Are you still here, Mr. Lepore? Oh, he's got his jacket in his hand.
So, no, well, my question is, so say we do purchase that property and it becomes our property, are we going to be responsible for the whole street then? I mean, is the, because it is currently a private road, so we're, who...
It's a private road.
I, I, no, I, I know, but it's a private road, the front part of it would be owned by us if we were to purchase it. I mean, you have to answer it today, I'm just curious to see.
We, we'd be responsible for our share of that roadway.
Okay, that's the answer.
Well, that's its negotiator with the homeowner, homeowners, there's some concessions to those, they could be, that could be negotiated, right? Some concessions with the neighborhood.
Right.
Since it's improving property values, the fact that you're preserving land, so you would ask for concessions.
But it may not.
Well, you can negotiate it.
They may say they don't want it.
The nature of negotiation.
Okay.
The homeowners may say they don't want public, you know, people driving on that road, coming into the property. It's their road.
They'll only be able to drive, they'll only be able to drive in the areas that the township acquires access easements.
A lot of catering to get out, that's a lot of...
The property acquires, either the property acquires...
I also think to keep moving this conversation, because it's moved right now, because we don't even know if we can go forward. My question, we need to wait and see, and then we need to ask the other question, or prepare before the next meeting with questions.
No, but we say no, yeah, they know what we're answering, the questions we have, we do, we can have the discussion, further discussion. Okay.
We have some homework to do.
We have a lot of homework to do. We do. ABC hearings are on for the next meeting, so motion to the judge.
There is a, a renewal, ABC 593-18 hearing on renewal of voluntary retail consumption. There was, there's a bunch of licensees that have met all the requirements, and so the ABC clerk put this on the agenda, so we should have...
Okay, so we can reconvene as the ABC board and look at that?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to convene the ABC board?
Second.
Good night, West Orange. Hopefully, we see you at Memorial Day, Monday, May 28th, 10 o'clock.
10 a.m.
Here at Town Hall.
Hopefully, we'll have sun shining.